Okay.
Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. So here with I'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Board on December 3rd, 2020. The opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2020 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of December 2019. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 2019 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of April and has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. For members of the general public, please note that as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the bottom center of your Zoom screen, or if you are participating by phone, by pressing star nine. If you're having difficulty accessing the raise hand feature, use the Q&amp;A dialogue box for assistance. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. For those who do offer comments, we ask that you please do your best to keep your comments to roughly three minutes or less and that you activate the camera on your device so that the Board and other meeting participants and attendees may see you. If you don't know how to do that, we can help guide you through it. If you're speaking during a hearing about an application, our attorney, Mr. Muller, will swear you in and ask you to state your name, spell your last name for the record, and tell us where you live. Then you may offer your testimony. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. In the unlikely event this should happen, the person who had to be muted will be moved to the back of the line and allowed to speak again. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
There's a tech here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Announcements. I want to start by saying that Wanda Gunning attended a meeting of the Landscape Committee earlier this week. She looks good. She's feeling so much better. And I'm, my fingers are crossed and I'm very hopeful that she'll be back in her chair next, our meeting next week. So that was really good news. And, and we do, in fact, have a special meeting next week, so that should be on everybody's calendars already.
It's a regular, please, Louise. It's a regular meeting of the.
Excuse me?
It is a regular.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Sorry, my mistake. Tonight's agenda, we're deferring a couple of items. The reorganization, or what's titled reorganization items, we are deferring until next week. And those are really agenda administrative business related to 2021. It's not the Board reorganization that will happen in early 2021 once we know who the Board members for 2021 are. And then we're also deferring the minutes that were on tonight's agenda for next week because those were not distributed ahead of time. So just want to make sure everybody has what they need to review before they're asked to vote on things. Are there any other announcements? Carrie, or Michael, or anybody?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um. So I think, Mr. Muller, you were saying before that we're skipping over modification to conditions of approval and going straight to the findings of fact. Is that correct? Can you?
Correct. And then after that, we're going to do the modification. And let me explain why. The first of the findings is Avalon Bay. That was decided on November 5. And I went back and forth with the attorney, Peter Flannery. But there was one condition that he would not agree was appropriate, and that was Condition 27, which described 10-foot wide bike path, possible reduction in the size of the cartway, some green space between the bike path, a bike and pedestrian path, and the cartway, et cetera. And he said, that really isn't what the Board decided. And of course, a resolution of memorialization simply memorializes the decisions that the Board made at the hearing, which is the subject of the resolution. And I said, Peter, you know, I'm certain that that's what it was because I literally read it from my notes. And I said, it needs way checking, actually, because it was the last condition we read. So the way we left it, and I know there were discussions between some of the council members and people from Avalon, was to go with this condition. But to file an application, very simple, it was in letter form. The letter was distributed to the council, which asked for an amendment to that condition. And that's.
Distributed to the Board, you mean?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the letter was distributed to the Board. You said distributed to the council. I just want to make sure the reference.
No, no, right.
The planning board.
My mistake. And in the letter, Mr. Flannery proposed a certain condition, but we were able to work out a modification of that. Because what happened after the, after the hearing was there were discussions between staff for Avalon and municipal staff and some principals about, does this really work what it's laid out in Condition 27? Can it really fit, given the existing conditions? The bike path, some green space, hopefully wide enough for street trees, and could we even narrow the cartway? So they filed this application to amend the condition, and that's what's going to be up after we finish with the resolutions. But as I said earlier, we can't get to that, to this new hearing, until we've actually adopted the condition which they're proposing to modify. So that, that's what's going on with this. And otherwise, otherwise, it just reflects, hopefully, everything that happened and that the Board decided with respect to Avalon, the last hearing being November 5.
Yeah, and as I read it, I think it puts us in a better position relative to making sure that there's room for street trees, making sure that pedestrian and bike safety is prioritized, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's a good conclusion, although I know it was a lot of work and back and forth. And thanks to all who participated and helped bring this about.
And we specified, and I know Mia had suggested this, you know, we should be specific as to what kind of traffic calming devices, if we're going to have any, they could be, and who would pay for them. And it's laid out that Avalon is paying for them.
Great.
But we'll get to that. We're not quite, actually, not there yet.
So should I, I'll just then introduce this particular finding of fact?
Right.
We ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, this is Princeton Thanet Road Urban Renewal LLC. It's a preliminary and final major site plan and subdivision, 100-101 Thanet Road, Block 5002, Lot 4, File Number P 2020-879P/SPF. So after that introduction, Mr. Cohen?
I'm just offering to adoption of the memorandum.
To move it? You're moving the resolution? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Hold a second.
And Mia Sacks seconds it? Good. Carrie, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
I have a question about Mr. Chow and Mr. O'Donnell. At the time, I thought Mr. Chow was the only alternate, and I did not call upon him. But since that time, we've realized that we have two alternates, and Mr. Chow should have been called upon for this vote. So what do I do about this?
Well, if he didn't vote, he can't vote now because only the people who voted in affirmative on the relief that was granted are eligible to vote on the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was this the meeting that started at 6:30?
Yes, and you were late, and I did not do in the final vote. Oh, actually, Mr. Chow came late, too, so I will not.
Right, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
So do we now go straight to the modification to condition of approval?
Well, we can, or we can finish the resolutions, whichever way you want to.
Why don't we just get this done and then go back to the resolutions?
Sure.
Like, it'll come one after another in the minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
Louise, I just wanted to say about this modification that I think it, the relevant point was not that there was a disparate perception of how things were left at the last meeting because it's, the main point is that the municipal staff and the Avalon staff spent quite a bit of time looking at the site and looking at what was possible. And basically, whatever, the point was that, you know, the, I think that the feeling was that the Planning Board voted for a 10-foot wide path if there could be green space. And there could only be green space if the road were reduced. And that actually was not possible. And so in order for there to be green space, and anyway, that there were, there were many conversations between our staff and Avalon staff, and they came up with this solution, which everyone seems to be happy with and provides for safety and aesthetic value, et cetera.
Thank you. It's an excellent introduction.
Okay. So this is actually a formal hearing. The Board has jurisdiction. And Jim, are you prepared to testify on this? Yeah, okay. If you could unmute yourself, and I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Do.
Plus one or affirm, please say your full name.
James Purcell, P-U-R-C-E-L-L.
Okay.
Princeton Land Use Engineer.
And if you could explain how we got to the point where we now have a resolution before the Board, which actually memorializes what I anticipated would be the decision today. And that's very unusual. The Board hasn't seen this before. They actually, it's actually a resolution of memorialization that's before the Board at the same time as the hearing and will be voted upon at the end of the hearing if the decision by the Board is consistent with the resolution. And the reason I did it this way is I know people were anxious to get this all wrapped up. So I thought this is the most efficient way of doing it. And as you can see from the resolution, it's not the usual elaborate resolution. It's, you know, much more truncated and just explains how we, why, why, and how we change Condition 27. But go ahead, Jim.
So Condition 27, after the, after the vote, was to install or construct a 10-foot wide shared-use path, which would have been on the west side of Thanet Road. That shared-use path would have taken up nearly all of the remaining space available in the right-of-way, leaving a one-foot grass strip or landscape strip available between either the roadway or the right-of-way line. As part of the resolution, there was a, there was a comment to potentially narrow the roadway in order to provide for a landscape strip. That narrowing of the roadway, however, would have been costly. It would have actually increased the danger for bicyclists that might be using the road. And it could have gotten down to 22 feet wide when it's 26 feet, but that extra four feet wouldn't have given us a good landscape strip. The bottom line is that even if we created a shared-use path, that shared-use path would be used by pedestrians and bicyclists, but many, many bicyclists like to use the roadway anyway. So we would have had a situation where we had a shared-use path for bicyclists and pedestrians. That shared-use path probably used by less experienced bicyclists. And because of the senior residential community going in, would have also been used as a pedestrian path for more elderly people. I considered that a safety issue and brought it to the attention of some of the members of our staff and to some of the council. I also believed that we, we needed to provide bicycle friendliness to the roadway itself. And the way the resolution was written, this was an exchange. The original thought was that Thanet Road would actually be a bicycle-friendly road with markings on it, at the very least, which was what was originally proposed. I had suggested in my memo that they treat it as a bicycle boulevard. During testimony, the applicant actually agreed to treat it as a bicycle boulevard prior to the condition being put on for the shared-use path. And it was my opinion that by placing the condition of the shared-use path, we lost the markings on the roadway, again, reducing the safety to bicyclists that might use the roadway because there was nothing in the resolution to require them to place the markings that they had originally thought about or to increase the amount of safety based on a bicycle boulevard. Now, may I explain what a bicycle boulevard is in, in a little bit of parlance? A bicycle boulevard is a shared-use roadway. It does not have bike paths separate from the traveling, the motor vehicles. It is, it has markings on the roadway to indicate that it is a shared-use roadway, if necessary, due to speed or the volume of traffic. It can include speed tables or speed humps as traffic calming measures. And it also has signing that indicates that it's a bicycle boulevard, so that all users are notified by the markings, the traffic calming measures, and the signing that this is a bicycle boulevard meant to be shared by motor vehicles and bicyclists. That, that is probably the safest way to treat this roadway, in my, in my professional opinion. So we discussed it amongst several people, as Mia Sacks has stated. And we've come to the conclusion that this resolution is the, is the appropriate way to go. And I will work with the developers, engineers, to make sure that we put in what is appropriate. And I'm not 100% sure what that is right now until I get to sit down with our, our traffic engineer and with their engineers to determine what, what should actually be placed. But at the very least, it will be the painted shadows on the roadway and the signs indicating it is a bicycle boulevard. We haven't determined what traffic calming measures we might install. And that's.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Michael, do you, or Heather, or Derek want to add anything?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add.
Okay, if you, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
Just one or affirm. Please say your full name.
Michael Laplace, I'm Planning Director for Princeton. I think Jim gave, just gave a great overview of the process that we've gone through to come up with what we think is a better solution. I just wanted to add that there was also great concern with what the result would be in terms of increased impervious surface on the site if we did this 10-foot wide path, the entire length of Thanet Road. So from an environmental standpoint, it just seemed like the wrong direction to go in. Plus, the fact that it would be difficult to accommodate shade trees, I certainly had a problem with that. I know a lot of other people did as well. So those were some more reasons why we think this is a greener, more sensible solution in terms of, of the environment, but also then those points that Jim made about safety, which are so important.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Heather, do you have anything to add, or Derek?
I don't have anything to add, Jerry. Thanks.
No, okay.
Anything?
No, I have not. No.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, at this point, Louise, if the Board can discuss this, or probably the most appropriate is to open up to the public and see if any members of the public have any comments. Not, are you speaking?
Board first or public first?
Well, you raised your hand right away, so I, I think we should hear what you have to say. And it may help inform the public's questions and comments as well.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I appreciate Mr. Purcell's report. I disagree somewhat with, I think that the safest thing would be a bike lane rather than cyclists in the road, given, but if it's, if it's not possible on this site, then it's just not possible. I'm concerned about the wording of the resolution itself. First of all, I'm overjoyed that the parallel parking spaces are gone. I think that'll make it more friendly for everyone and improve circulation. But the resolution itself doesn't seem to commit Avalon to doing anything other than markings, which are probably the least effective piece. It says here, appropriate calming measures in accordance. And then it says the calming measures if and as necessary. That, that sounds like a bit of a, that's a lot of wiggle room there. And who determines if and as necessary? Is it a consultation between our, our staff and the Avalon staff as happened in reaching this resolution? And who breaks the tie if they can't reach an agreement?
You know, that's, that's a very good point, Tim. And actually, this, that clause, if and as necessary, we needed at the request of, of Mr. Flannery. But we could put, but I think it's always important, and I always tried to make it clear when there's going to be discussions back and forth, that somebody has to be, be appointed the ultimate arbiter. So I would add, if and as necessary, as determined by the land use engineer. Is that, is that to resolve your problem?
Yes.
Okay. I thank you.
And I'd be happy to offer my experience as someone who's been riding a bike for 30 years in this town, should Mr. Purcell want anecdotal evidence from a non-professional.
And I would like to add, if I may, that Mr. Quinn is, is correct that the safest way would be designated bicycle paths. But in order to do that, we would not have enough room. There's only a 26-foot wide roadway, and if we put a designated bike path in, we'd have to have them on both sides. That'd take 10 feet away. So we'd be in a, we'd only have 16 feet for motor vehicles.
And if I may, Peter, obviously, you're representing the applicant which filed the request. Is there anything you want to add, or do you, anybody that you would like to have testify? Peter?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you. You're frozen, but we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I have a difficult connection. Hold on just a minute.
We can hear you now, or I can anyway.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to add that I agree with Mr. Quinn. And if you remember, last time I had advocated for a separate path because I felt that that was the safer way. But after having been out at the site with this staff, and I felt that the, from an aesthetic perspective, having the road and then the, directly the 10-foot side path would have been, you know, not ideal, and that the, it would have prevented the buffer of street trees. And it seemed, and, and, and the own, and narrowing the road, I thought, gave some real concerns about emergency vehicle access. And so it was unbalanced. This seemed like the better solution. But I hear what you're saying, Mr. Quinn, and I just, you know, agree in theory.
It's Peter Flannery. Sorry, I had a bad connection. I'm just joining a little late. I didn't quite hear the, the rest of Mr. Quinn's statement. I just wanted to add that we wanted to build in some flexibility on this condition. We don't want to have to keep going back to the Board, as we're doing now, when we determine that the condition in the resolution just won't work for the project. So we want to build in some flexibility to allow the Princeton and Avalon Bay to work together and come up with a product that's safe and also achieves the green goals of Princeton. So I think that the language that we recommended, with the caveat of, you know, the engineer having some control over, you know, the final product, is, I think, a good solution here.
Just to be clear, Mr. Flannery, we want the engineer to have the final say if you guys can't come to an agreement on specifically what's appropriate in terms of the traffic calming measures. That was the, I think you missed that part. That was the suggested in the if and as necessary by the municipality was the language that would be added.
As determined by the land use.
As determined by the land use engineer. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
So I have a question. So has the markings been determined? Or that's something that will be determined later?
If I may, the, it would be a standard based on the National Association of City Transportation Officials guidelines. And I'm going to be recommending shadows every 200 feet and the appropriate signage at least entering into Thanet, entering onto Thanet from both of the developments and, and leaving Thanet as well, so that there's, there's sufficient signage. The one thing, the only thing that I'm not, I haven't discussed with, with the other professionals is what type of traffic calming may or may not be necessary. But we'll look at speed cushions, speed, speed humps, and possibly where they have their crosswalk, a raised crosswalk. But we have to, we have to look at that from an engineering standpoint. And part of it is drainage, part of it is, is bike, bike mobility as well, making sure there's plenty of openings.
Last, last time we talked about this, I had suggested having shoulder stripes to narrow the traffic lane. And I was wondering if that was in consideration. I think that, you know, visually, even though it's going to be a wide road, you know, I guess 26 feet, you know, so 13 on each. If you put the stripes, you know, at 10 feet, you know, it will feel like a much narrower travel lane, and that hopefully would reduce travel speeds.
The, the guidelines for a bicycle boulevard, however, have no traffic stripes, period. No center stripes, no side stripes, nothing. It's to make the bicycle a, to make the roadway a shared roadway. By putting in the side stripes, you're, you're. by putting in the side stripes, you're, you're sort of indicating that bicyclists need to stay there. And that is not, that is not a guideline that bike boulevards adhere to.
Yeah.
And if you wanted, as I said, if you wanted a real bike, separate bike lane, you'd need five feet, and then that's just not enough roadway width. But we will, we will, Heather, Heather and I will put our heads together on what's the appropriate thing to do, and we'll get together with the applicant's engineer and, and come to an agreement.
Tim, did I understand you correctly, where you said, at least for some bike, bike boulevards, there's no center line?
Correct.
If there are no other questions from board members, I will open up this hearing to members of the public. So if you'd like to speak, click on the raise hand feature at this bottom center of your Zoom screen. David, are there people who have?
There are none, but I want to just mention, Madam Chair, that your volume is very low, as happens from time to time, so they may not have raised their hands because they couldn't tell what you were saying. So I will repeat it, just in case, and say that
Thank you.
of the public who wants to ask a question or weigh in on this modification should raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the center bottom of your screen.
Thank you. Now, are, are people lining up?
They're not.
No.
Right.
Okay. All right, then, then I will close the public hearing portion of this part of the meeting. And if there are any other questions from board members, now's the time to ask them or to move this resolution, this modification resolution.
I, I will move the modification to item 27, condition 27.
It was basically, and the motion is basically granting the relief and approving the resolution at the same time.
Right.
I'll second with the changes as noted.
Thank you. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board's help.
Thanks, everybody. Next on the agenda is finding a fact related to Pearl LIHT Urban Renewal. This is preliminary and final major site plan. 100 Thanet Road, block 5002, lot 4, file number P 2020-882P. This is a resolution on the application that we heard on November 17th. Are there questions? And if I, Mr. Cohen?
Well, we did receive some modified language for this resolution as well relating to the pedestrian pathways, the layout of the pedestrian pathways. But I, I just want to clarify, that is not an actual modification to the resolution like what we just discussed. That was just language editing to make sure that it was a correct reflection of what the original board decision was, correct?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Would someone like to move this? Ms. Sax?
Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Oakman seconded. Roll call, please, Carrie.
Madam Chair, I apologize. This is Richard Hoff. I, this is, just to be clear, this is for the Pearl LIHTC Urban Renewal LLC, correct?
Correct, yes. Sorry if I misspoke at some point.
Just want to make sure.
Yep, this is it. Thank you. Go ahead, Carrie.
You're muted.
Sorry. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ma, Madam, Madam Chair, again, I apologize. Richard Hoff again. Jerry, I just noticed, after all the back and forth on this resolution that we had, it's actually titled Pearl, but the actual applicant's name is Princeton LIHTC Urban Renewal.
Right, that's what they, that's what the, the caption says at the beginning.
Okay, because the, the draft I had that was attached to the one that was sent had Pearl written in, not Princeton.
I did change it. I thought that I was reflecting the applicant name, so my apologies.
And that's right. No, no, that's, that's accurate, Carrie, what you did.
No, no.
I think it, I think it might be, it might show incorrectly on the
The application, when it came in, came in as applicant name Pearl, P-I-R-H-L, H-I, LIHTC Urban Renewal, comma, LLC. So that's how I reflected it, and that's usually how my findings are done. So if you need it changed, then that's a unusual thing, but
But, but the one that I think was distributed to the board and that I sent to you
The one you sent to me did say the, what Mr. Hoff is requesting, but I changed it to reflect the applicant name because that's what we do.
Why don't we change it back to the way I had it, which, which actually reflects what the, the actual name of the, the applicant is?
Okay, good. Thank you. So it should say Princeton LIHT
C.
C, Urban Renewal, comma, LLC.
Yeah, and then I put in parentheses Pearl, just so people knew what that was.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next finding of fact is Princeton Public Schools. We heard this application on September 24th for conditional use, Princeton High School Improvements. This is on Moore Street, block 23.01, lots 1, 4, 6, 7, 9, 31, 32, and 33. File number P 2020-884CO. Are there any questions about this resolution, or would someone like to move it?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Cohen. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sax seconded. Carrie, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Chow? Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned before, the minutes are deferred until next week. So next on the agenda are public hearings, two public hearings. The first and second are from the trustees of Princeton University. The first is preliminary and final major site plan for the soccer stadium and practice field, Faculty Road and Fitz Randolph Road, block 50.01, lot 18. File number P 2020-870P. Deadline for action is December 26th. Mr. Mueller, can you speak to proper notice and jurisdiction?
Yeah, proper notice was given, and the board has jurisdiction.
May I interrupt a second? Before we get started, I have a couple of people I think are still attendees. If we could bring them in, Ron McCoy is one of them. James Corner. And Kim Jackson. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Ron, and I, and I got Kim. Who is the third person?
James Corner.
I just promoted him.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Mr. Degrassia.
Oh, okay. As you indicated, well, for the record, my name is Christopher Degrassia from the law firm of Fegory, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. As you indicated, we are here tonight for preliminary and final site plan related to a soccer stadium and soccer practice field. You probably recall, we were before this board, almost a year ago now, I think it was January, where we presented a concept plan for an area we identified as the East Campus. At that time, we presented our concept and our vision for the East Campus and indicated that we would be coming in with site plans for different elements. The first one, you, you all saw just not too long ago, I believe it was October, and that was the East Campus Garage. And that was strategically placed first, so we would have some infrastructure in place, and we will bring on parking as early as possible. Tonight, we are here with the second major site plan application. And from the location of the garage, we will be shifting a little bit north and a little bit west for the soccer stadium and the practice field. It's a, it's a really nice facility. This is not a new program at the university. This is a replacement field. So because of other construction, Robert Stadium, which was the place that our varsity team played, was demolished, and this new stadium is now going to take its place. And I think that's all I need to say to get us started. We have a very detailed presentation, and I would like to introduce, I don't know, Jerry, do you want me to, well, do you want us to go through witnesses all at the same time? Or should we handle it one person at a time?
Before you do, I, I'm sorry to break in, but I neglected to, to ask Mr. Laplace
Yeah.
whether he has any introductory comments. I apologize for that, Michael.
He already said all the good stuff.
That's what I tell, that's what I always say after you go.
That's all right. I won't, I won't
I still feel like such a rookie.
Yeah, I won't, I won't take it personally, no problem.
Michael, if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do, yes.
So just want to affirm, please say your full name.
Michael Laplace, Planning Director, Princeton Town. Just wanted to, as Christopher said, this is another component of the evolving East Campus that we've heard a lot about this year. We had an overview earlier in the year from the university, and then we've seen some other components, and this is a major one. New soccer stadium and a practice field, a natural turf stadium and an artificial turf practice field. The, the site, as, as you heard, is, is on the westerly, westerly side of Fitz Randolph Road. It is going to be, the stadium will be to the north of a new street, Jadwan Drive, and the practice field will be south of this new road. And this is adjacent to the new parking garage that we heard about, the East Garage. And the entire area is generally where current athletic fields are that Chris mentioned, and also the former surface parking lot 21 for the university. I just wanted to mention that it's in the E1 education zone of the former township. It's a permitted use, and it, it's also in conformance with the current Princeton University campus plan. So it's going to be an interest, I, I'm looking forward to the presentation. The stadium is seating over 2,000 spectators, and I'm, I'm sure the university will go a little detail about the architecture and the site details of both the stadium and the practice facility. Staff in their reports, in our reports, we've raised issues such as connections to the circulation system for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists, how parking for visitors will be handled, and how this fits in with other aspects of the campus plan. So I just wanted to touch on some of those points.
Thank you. Any other municipal professionals want to comment? Okay, all right, Mr. Degrassia, you can resume your dialogue with Mr. about how you want us swearing your witnesses.
That's why I hesitated at first when you called me. I said, oh, Michael must not want to talk tonight.
No, it's all on me.
I don't think there's ever been a time when I haven't wanted to talk, but I'll let you know.
I could, I could appreciate that.
Louise, do you have a preference one way or another of swearing them all in together or separately?
I do not have a preference.
Why don't we swear them all in at once? If all the university witnesses can raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
I do.
So just want to affirm, please say your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
I'll start. Ron McCoy, M-C-C-O-Y, University Architect at Princeton University. Sorry, go ahead.
All right. Emily Piersol, P-I-E-R-S-O-L. I am an acoustical consultant with Bryson Johnson and Williams, and I live in Penbrook.
James Corner, Landscape Architect for Princeton University.
Kim Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N, Director of Transportation and Parking Services at Princeton University.
George Akma, BFG Planning, Parking and Traffic Consultant for Princeton University.
Jeffrey Graydon, G-R-A-Y-D-O-N, Senior Associate Athletic Director at Princeton University.
Vinicius Gorgati, Architect Principal with Sasaki Associates Architects for Princeton University. G-O-R-G-A-T-I.
Chris Longo, Civil Engineer with VHB. L-O-N-G-O.
Chad Grosshart with Atelier 10 Lighting Design. G-R-O-S-H-A-R-T.
Mark Gabriel, Niche Engineering. Stormwater Engineering.
Hey, Zach Crisco, Civil Engineer with Sasaki Associates, providing the field stormwater design. Last name is Crisco, C-H-R-I-F-C-O.
And everyone, Mr. Degrassia?
I think our project
Mr. Nyquist, Mr. Nyquist.
Hi. I don't think Tom is speaking to this project.
I'm sorry.
Yes, he's on the next project. Thank you, Carrie. I, Josh, Josh Linkov, is he available? I think he was going to be sworn in as well, just in case there's questions.
Josh Linkov, L-I-N-K-O-V, Assistant University Architect, Princeton.
I think that should do it. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so we're going to turn this over to our presentation. We're going to start with Ronald McCoy, University Architect, licensed in New Jersey, currently licensed. He testified many, many times before this board. He can go through his further qualifications if you would like.
Yeah, I think, I think he should be qualified, cause.
Okay. Ron, do you want to briefly talk about your education experience?
Okay, briefly, I'm graduate of undergraduate school in architecture in USC and graduate in graduate school at, in architecture at Princeton University. And I've been a practicing architect for 35 or 40 years. I've been a professor emeritus from Arizona State University. And I've been at Princeton University for 13 years.
Boy, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to share my screen. And ask if everybody can see that screen.
Yes.
Okay, well, as you could tell from the introductions, we have a team of expert consultants who will help us through the presentation and on the particular questions that may come up in the, in the session following the presentation. I'm going to give as, as a bit of a thorough overview and not go too much into the details, but to try to give you a very comprehensive sense of, of the project. So I'm going to jump into it here.
Ron, let me, let me ask you this. Is this a set of?
Yes, I will read the slide numbers. How about that?
Okay, we'll, we'll treat this as exhibit A1.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
That, that's fine. All right, beginning, slide one is just a cover sheet showing an aerial photograph of, of the site. I think the stadium obviously is the landmark, Finney Campbell. Just to the east of the track stadium is another place of orientation. The, the game field is situated between Finney Campbell Field and Fitz Randolph Road. It's on this, partially on the site of the observatory, which you see here in the middle of the slide. The practice field is south of Finney Campbell and a little bit to the west of the observatory area. So just for orientation, those are good landmarks. I'm beginning here on page two, slide two, showing just the overview of the East Campus Plan as has been mentioned. We have been presenting this in different stages and beginning back in January, where we gave an overview of the overall campus, campus plan for the East Campus. You'll see here the soccer stadium and the practice field located here, practice field just to the west of the, of the parking garage. Let me just, while I have this slide up, I think one of the questions that Mr. Place noted that, that was something that he'd want us to address is the, the overall integration. And I'll say that during this presentation, James Corner will talk about the landscape aspects of this project. But just as a reminder, I think one of the most significant things that we do to ensure an integration between the various projects and between those projects and the existing campus is to use landscape architecture as the fabric, the tissue that holds everything together. And we have had a longstanding tradition of working with a single landscape architectural firm with, with a broad area of expertise, everything from planning to landscape architecture, to ensure continuity and integration of all the individual projects. So as, so as each individual project at certain, at a certain point stands on its own, we rely on strong planning principles and really strong landscape design to tie the whole campus together. And James Corner and his team have responsibility for everything that we're doing in this, in this capital planning period. And so landscape is really the glue that holds things together. Let me then begin slide three, just transition slide, talking about the soccer stadium and practice field. Slide four now shows the existing conditions and you'll see here dashed in red to the east of the Finney Campbell Fields, as I mentioned earlier, the location of the proposed soccer stadium and just to the south and west of that on, on top of the existing parking lot 21, partial part, part of that parking lot 21 is the location of the proposed practice field. So just to orient you to those two site locations. Now on slide five, as was mentioned, this facility is simply a relocation of an existing facility, the Roberts Stadium, that had existed on the west side of campus, just south of Poe Field. Roberts Stadium, as you may know, remember, is, is a project that has been demolished as we have made way for the construction of the two new residential colleges on, on that site. I'll point out a few aspects of Robert Stadium, cause they, you know, they bear on some of the things that we've done in the design of the, of the current soccer stadium. Most significantly, at Robert Stadium, we were able to have the practice field and the game field adjacent to each other. Plummer Field is the practice field, as you can see in this diagram. Plummer Field was an artificial turf field, because it gets intensive use seven days a week. And Robert Stadium was a natural turf field that was used for, for games. And so both teams, men's and women's, practiced on plumber. Occasionally, there was practice on Roberts at the same time, but Roberts was really reserved to preserve the quality of the field was, was reserved for, for events. In the new site plan, we don't have the breadth of sight to put the two fields side by side. That is a minor inconvenience, but it comes with some, some advantages. And you'll see that on, on Robert Stadium, it was a three-sided U with the top and bottom and the, and the western leg forming that U. But the eastern leg was open and it lacked a sense of intimacy and energy. In the new field, you see on the right, it's also a three-sided U, but it wraps the long sides and the southern side. And it's sort of tighter, so it's a few less formal seats in the, in the, in the structured seating in the stands. But importantly, the north end of the stadium is a burned lawn, like you'll see in some soccer stadium, but probably more sort of notably in spring training baseball games, where there's a kind of lawn sitting outside of the, of the, of the, of the field for people to lounge on. I think of the staff report said that that was outside the stadium. I just want to correct that and say that it's within the stadium. It may have looked outside the stadium, because there is a fence that protects soccer balls from going into that area, but it's within the stadium. The fence around this, around the perimeter stadium is behind that lawn on the northern side. There is an entry pavilion on the west end, on the western side, a concession pavilion on the eastern side. And on the western side, that's actually ends up being a three-story structure that I'll explain in a minute. And so the locker rooms and, or the, the team rooms and the benches are stacked beneath the main concourse and provides better functionality and relationships than we've been able to achieve than we were able to achieve in Robert Stadium. Those are some of the major differences or, or sort of aspects of the project. And I'll talk about some of the other site conditions as we go through. Now on slide six, this is again a bit of an overview, getting a sense of the position of the fields and the landscapes adjacent to them. I will point out that the, we're, we're designing also for the future. And in particular, this walkway on the western side of the stadium. We imagine as the eastern campus is developed in the future, that that walkway will continue northward to Western Way and begin to form a network of connectivity throughout that campus. Likewise, there would be a walkway that currently is shown here on the northern side of the stadium that would extend to the west and connect up to Stadium Drive. So we have a bit of a grid and a network that will provide access throughout, throughout this area. To the west of the practice field, you'll see an, an open area that is designed to anticipate the future landing spot for what we've called the flyover. I think you, you may know that we're not building that flyover in this current capital plan period, which goes through 2030. But we have, and, and we intend to build that and we're reserving that land for the arrival space of that flyover and potentially some other opportunity site for an existing, for a new facility that could happen there. You see a bit of a clearing within the center of this landscape to the west of the practice field. That would be one of several event spaces that tents would be set up for, for the different sports that are in this part of the campus, primarily soccer and football for tented events that are organized, you know, for, for reunions and for homecoming and things like that. There's also an area in front of Denon's Pool that could, could be arranged for that. Okay, now then, to, well, let me just say on the eastern side of the stadium, there's another area for tenting and a roadway that connects, a service road that connects to Fitz Randolph that I'll talk about in a few minutes. So now if we look a bit at the architecture of the west pavilion, you'll see that the elevation of the entry concourse is at 130. The field is at 120. What we've done is slightly sloped up to that arrival point, so that when you enter, you're entering in the upper concourse. There's ADA accessible seating throughout the stadium and you're looking down onto the field. And below this, the sort of platform at that arrival concourse, below that one level down would be where the team benches are. This level also has restrooms for fans and spectators. There's a ticketing room. And there's a stair with this red arrow that goes a kind of shortcut down to the, the team rooms for the, for the soccer players, men's and women's team. They would then come in and out of that if they're going to the, if they're going back and forth between the game field and the practice stadium, practice field, which as I said, is just to the south and to the west of this area. So there's a rather generous arrival plaza here for the kind of flow of, of fans in a stadium during events. And to the west further is that Finney Campbell Field. Now on slide eight, this shows the three levels of the west pavilion stacked. So we were just looking at this middle diagram of the arrival concourse. Going down one level, you can see the organization of the team rooms. Those are shared. Those are men's, men's and women's team room and a visitor room here. It's important to note that the locker rooms for these varsity teams will remain in Caldwell Fieldhouse. So the student athletes will arrive at Caldwell and then that will be their sort of primary shower facility and locker room facility. And then these team rooms are really for gathering before the game and at breaks in the, in the game. To the left-hand side, you'll see the, the upper level, one level up. And that's primarily a press box and two filming platforms that can film out over, over the stadium. I didn't point out the team benches are just to the, to the, on the eastern wall of this lower level and they face out onto the, the playing surface. Now on the other side, the eastern side of the pavilion, you see Fitz Randolph Road off to the right here. This red arrow is a set of stairs that again come up from the, from the grade up to the concourse level at elevation 130. There is a ramp here that serves both disabled patron access and also food concessions, because we, we have, we would have carts that would just wheel up here and deliver concessions to the back of house for the concession stand. Again, restrooms on this side of the, of the stadium. You'll see a pathway that meanders south of that. And that's going through the grove of Beatrix Fern trees that we are preserving. I think there's seven trees in that grove that we are, we are preserving and they have existing roots. And so protecting those roots and maintaining the grades around those roots has been a bit of a factor that drove the, the contours on this side of the site. Now on page 10, these are two views of the western pavilion. The top view here is we are basically above Finney Campbell Field. Looking to the east, we're looking, so we're looking at the arrival concourse level plaza, the ticketing area here and the filming and press box platforms above. The materials of the building are very, very similar to what we had at Robert Stadium, which was a very elegant, simple pavilion. It's a mixture of a ground face concrete block. And then this wood material is actually a product called resista. So it is, it's, it's, it's not real wood. It's a, has a longer life and the primary material is rice husks that make up this, that makes up, make up this, this product. The lower view here, now you're on the field, looking to the west and you'll see the, the team benches here. The portal behind which would be the team rooms, the middle level, which is the arrival level, the concourse level, restrooms on either side. And then above that, the press box and the filling platforms. And the same vocabulary of the resista wood and the ground face concrete block for the, for the walls of the building. And that concrete block is painted orange down at the athletic level, down at the field level. And then the kind of aluminum grandstands surrounding the, the stadium. You'll also see what we are very excited about, a very thoughtfully designed landscape setting that James Corner will talk about a little bit later in the presentation. That sets, creates a setting and a sense of place for this new stadium on the east side of the campus. Now on page 11, we're looking at the East Pavilion. Top view here is basically from Fitz Randolph. This is a sidewalk in the foreground that's adjacent to Fitz Randolph. And we're simply looking at those set of steps, the back of the concession area and the ramp that gets up to that concourse level. The lower portion of this drawing shows again, standing on the field, looking back toward the concession stand and to the, to the restrooms and to the seating area. And importantly, now we're giving you a view of the section through this, through the field. These are topics that will come up during the presentation. We're trying to layer the use of the ground, so we can get multiple uses out of it. And we're doing two things here. One is that we are creating a regional stormwater system. So this stormwater system is not serving the soccer stadium, but it is a regional system that will serve projects that are upstream or uphill from, from this particular site. So it's not part of, it's not solving the stormwater solution on this site, but it's providing capacity for future projects, which is a regional logistic wide solution that we had, that we wanted to take advantage of since we had this area. That system then sits on top of, or layered on top of the Geo, Geo Exchange wells, which is the subject of our next application conversation. But the, those wells then sit beneath that stormwater, regional stormwater system and provide the heating and cooling storage for the, for the Geo Exchange hot water, chilled water system. Slide 12 here is just a transition slide, talking about circulation and access. Slide 13 gives a little bit of detail here. You'll see the blue arrows are the pedestrian points of entrance to the soccer stadium, which I've talked about a little bit on the last set of slides. The practice field will have also multiple fences or gates in and out of the, in, in and out of the field for pedestrians and also for service. And we've shown the, the parking garage entrance and exits that are part of the, part of the overall network of the system. You'll see crosswalks that cross Jadwan Drive at, one is right outside the parking garage. Another one is between that main pathway between that connects the soccer stadium and the soccer practice field. So those are the primary pedestrian points. There is also a, there's also shown here a crosswalk that goes between the soccer stadium site and the Tiger Facility. We've seen, I think in some staff reports, a recommendation for a rapid flashing beacon there. We do not think it would warrant that beacon, but George Jackmore can talk about that more detail in, in, in response to questions, if you want to return back to that. And in the northeast side of the stadium, I wanted to point out the service entrance. There was a comment from Sprab that asked us to, to try to align that service entrance with the driveway at the childcare facility. We thought that that was, was certainly worth studying and we gave it a lot of attention following the sprab meeting. But we found out that it doesn't work so well. But first of all, just to clarify, this is seldom used. Maybe a couple of times, Jeff can, Jeff can testify this, maybe once a month, maybe twice a month for, for major access to the field. And it to, to put a, an S curve in it would have complicated the turning, the, the turning radius required for the vehicles that would need to access that. So we studied that, but we prefer to keep it as it is. It, because it's so seldom used, it would not create a conflict. This is really just like a residential driveway or even less than that in terms of its usage. And we've decided to keep it in the condition that we've shown it here. Okay, moving on to slide 14, this is a bit more detail of the pedestrian and bicycle routes. We, we did have a, a comment from staff proposing bike bollards at the stadium and the practice field. We thought that was a good idea to add that. We thought that was a good idea to add that. Those would be supplement the amount of bike parking that we have at the garage, which has, as you can say, about a hundred and eight spaces. We modeled these a number of bike bollards here based on what we had at Robert Stadium, which we thought was a good starting point. And we can easily add more over time if it if it if it warrants it. You should know there's a lot of bike parking over at between Denonzo Caldwell and Caldwell and at Jadwin. So there's a lot of bike parking in the area, but we did think it was a good idea to add the bike parking here. We've in terms of pedestrian circulation, I pointed out where the primary pedestrian crossing would be for for athletes. We've been very careful to try to keep the pedestrians on the south side of Jadwin Drive and on the west side of Stadium Drive to minimize any crossing to the athletic fields. So we've been very careful to kind of control the crossings of the athletic fields. And then in red, you'll see the circulation network for vehicles either along existing Fitz Randolph, east, west, along Jadwin or north, south on on the stadium Stadium Drive. And I think service access I already talked about here at the northeast side of the of the stadium. Now on slide fifteen. What I really wanted to do here was just give a better sense of the the typical schedule and the and attendance. The games are between the second men's and women's games between September, the middle of September. There are beginning of the games. Throughout the season, they the games are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday and Sunday. The weekend games will start are are between one and seven. The weekday games are between five and seven. And I think we had conversations or questions in in some of our meetings about conflict between the regular university populations, parking in the parking garage and to athletic events. I just wanted to point out that they're timed. So the athletic events will start after people have begun to vacate the garage. And so we get double use out of that garage and and Kim Jackson can also testify to how the university through uses parking management to control those kinds of events, whether or not it's a soccer game and or something happening in the football stadium or one of the other venues on this side of the of the of the campus. You'll see the average attendance and then you'll also see the average number of of cars. And then postseason for tournaments can be up to full capacity and you see postseason, which could be up to eight hundred cars. But again, all that is is managed carefully by the university transportation parking services group. Now on slide sixteen, it's a transition slide to talk about lighting. Slide seventeen is a detailed plan, a site plan that shows the location of lighting poles. We have we're showing one hundred foot lighting poles for the soccer stadium, seventy foot lighting poles for the practice field. And as noted in the reports, these these are we're requesting a waiver for for the height of these poles because they exceed the forty feet. Importantly, also, there's an additional requirement that there's a one no more than a one to one distance ratio between the height of the pole and the location in the nearest property line with a one hundred foot pole that is two hundred and thirty six feet from that property line. So that satisfies the the limit of that one to one ratio for that that particular pole. You'll see here the lighting poles on the on the practice field and also on the on the stadium. Now on slide eighteen, we just wanted to use this to illustrate the technology of of modern field lights. I think everybody's familiar with the scenario on the left here, which are the old version of sports lights, which do have a lot of glare and they light up the sky as much as they light up the field. And these are the ones that are not very friendly. As technology has evolved to standards today, particularly with glare control and LED lamps. On the right hand side, you get a sense of the 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 evolution of that lighting technology. And that's the tech, that's the technology that we're going to be using on these projects on both the game field and on the practice field. Slide nineteen shows a example of a field that has been retrofitted from the old style light fixtures to the new style light fixtures. You'll see notably a much better illumination of the playing surface. And also compare the spillage off of the playing surface on the left. It's going on to the stands and into the track. And on the right is really the cutoff is is quite sharp. And so minimum light spillage away from the athletic field. That's all attributed to the the glare control and the LED light fixtures that we have. We use this at Bedford Field. In terms of the lighting, we are meeting the code requirements for the for the spillage quite easily. You can see the we're down to the the required foot candles easily here and and well away from the property line of joining joining property. This is a rendering that then shows gives you a sense of what those those light poles would be like. Here they are on the on the primarily for showing what we have here on the on the game field. The the additional height that we're requesting for these light poles also is better because the light shines back straight, more more vertical down to the surface and less at a kind of raking raking angle. If they were lower, they would be throwing more light away from the field, which could cause more light trespass. Now we're on slide twenty two and we're looking different view toward the south and toward the east. We have the West Pavilion in the foreground, the East Pavilion in the background there. This shows that sloped lawn on the northern side of the soccer stadium and the fence around the soccer stadium and that protective screen between the game, between the field and the the sloped lawn. Looking now on slide twenty three, this is the typical street and pedestrian lighting. We have, you know, this is all again calculated and designed to provide both comfortable lighting and safe lighting with the parking garage here. And with the event pedestrian traffic, we wanted to ensure that we had appropriate level of illumination in this in this part of the campus. Now it's like twenty four, which is the transition slide. We're going to talk about now on slide twenty five, the the sound system. And we have, as 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 noticed in the introductions, we have Emily Pierceall here, who can answer questions about this. When we, if we if we have questions at the end of this presentation. But what we're illustrating here is that the sound system, there is a sound system in in the stadium with speakers that are located on the the western side. They are controlled by the controller system for these for the sound system so that they will not exceed a maximum sixty five decibel reading. And this outer line here is the is the is the state regulation bound is this is the is the boundary of the sixty five decimal reading. And it meets the state regulations because it is away from the property line of the nearest, the nearest adjoining property. These controlled settings cannot be overridden by staff so that they will not be tuned up. And if an event does go below ten PM, it can be controlled by the right people so that we we limit the sound at night if it goes, if if any event goes past ten PM, which is seldom, but it could happen. We can control the sound so that we can again be in compliance with the state regulations for for noise after ten PM. Now on slide twenty six, a turn transition slide to talk about landscape. On slide twenty seven, I'm going to then hand over to James Coroner, who can talk about the strategy for landscape for the project.
Thank you, Ron. That's a very thorough and complete description. I'm not sure I have too much more to add. There's a few factual things I can say about the land.
Chris, Chris, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, good, good catch. We need to have you qualified. So you have been, you've been sworn in already, so that's good.
Okay.
But we still need to go through your education and your licenses.
Okay. I'm a professional landscape architect, professionally registered for over thirty years now. I'm registered in New Jersey and ten other states in the US. I professor of landscape architecture and urban design at the University of Pennsylvania. And I'm a CEO of my own professional practice with over eighty professionals based in New York City. And it's been a great pleasure to serve as Princeton's landscape architect for the past two or three years now.
Mr. Coroner, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. So as I said, Ron has done a very good presentation.
Stadium soccer stadium.
Yeah, I just add a few landscape notes to this, and that is that we are required to replace one hundred and twenty three trees, but we're actually proposing one hundred and eighty one. So we're planting more trees than we're required to. You'll notice on the west side, a generous new plaza that allows for both crowding and getting in and out of the stadium. But also we have seating and a variety of plantings there, including magnolia trees and sourwood trees and a variety of other species that will lend color and give the quality of a garden to that space. On the western side, in the sort of northwestern quadrant, are a variety of new specimen trees that include London plane and Kentucky coffee tree. And in the southwestern portion, you'll see that we've preserved some fairly sizable sweet gum trees. Along Fitz Randolph Road, we're adding new street trees, a mixture of oaks and London plane and Kentucky coffee tree. And along Jadwin Drive, a new LA of oaks. Next slide.
We're in twenty eight.
The practice field is very similar. The darker colored trees are existing trees that are preserved. The lighter colored trees are additional trees that we're planting. We're doing this for biodiversity, but also to help screen out and scale down denuncio pool, but also to screen out the practice field from faculty, road and garage drive. There's a variety of species here too, again, for biodiversity. These are all native species, a mixture of oak, pine, sourwood, magnolia and dogwood. And the next slide, Ron.
Slide twenty nine.
Just very quickly, this shows a commitment to biodiversity, not simply with tree species, but also with shrubs and with ground covers and grasses and perennials. These are chosen, they're all native, they all grow together as an ecosystem. But importantly, they provide a lot of seasonal variety. There's a lot of color in spring, a lot of variation in the summer, a lot of fall color and winter interest. And the next slide.
Slide thirty.
A very similar palette for the practice field. I think that concludes the landscape slides, Ron.
Great, thank you, James. So slide thirty one is a transition slide to store order management. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our stormwater design professional.
And that would be Mark Gabriel.
Yes, I Chris, Mark Gabriel, niche engineering, a bachelor's of science in civil engineering at Northeastern University, professional engineer in New Jersey, Massachusetts. I'm a project manager with niche engineering. And I've been working in the engineering field for sixteen years now.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much. So I'll start with slide thirty two here. This slide is showing the existing and proposed conditions at the soccer stadium. And we'll start with the soccer stadium first. The existing site is on the left is primarily grass site with the existing observatory structures and paved areas are shown in white and gray. And the previous areas, the grass is is in the green. Today's stormwater generally she flows to an existing closed drainage system. There's three drainage discharge locations, which are the blue rectangles going to A, C and D one there in the existing conditions. Onsite soil testing was done by geotechnical engineer. And the reports indicate the predominant presence of D soils on this site. There are no known water quality best management practices or structures on the site that exist today in this area. In the proposed conditions on the right, the, you know, as we talked about, the soccer stadium, walkways, landscape areas and associated utilities. Non-structural stormwater management strategies were proposed for the project. They include, you know, best management practices for and low income, low impact development techniques that used to mitigate changes and runoff, promote recharge where feasible and provide water quality treatment. This design prevents the generation of stormwater and non-point source pollution by greening the site and disconnecting flow pass, treating and promoting recharge of stormwater at its source and protecting natural processes. The proposed site is predominantly grass with a grass soccer field and paved walkways around the stadium. There is a paved access drive located in the northwest corner of the stadium coming off of Fitz Randolph. Stormwater discharges to the same three discharge locations discussed previously, that blue rectangles around the site. Stormwater from the existing athletic field to the north above this picture, not colored, is captured and piped around the stadium to the existing discharge point A in the bottom left of that image. As Ron pointed out earlier, the project does have that complex layering system with the geothermal wells, regional stormwater management system. And then above that is the stormwater management system that is for the soccer stadium. The regional system, it's an enclosed precast concrete stormwater detention system that will be used to mitigate future upstream projects. It's not proposed to support the development associated with this project. Excuse me, the regional system is approximately eighty thousand cubic feet of storage. The storm on a manager system associated with this project, the soccer stadium here are not connected to the regional system and they do not rely on it for stormwater mitigation from the site. Stormwater management systems that are used for this project include, you have the grass field in the middle of the soccer stadium that below it has a subsurface flat panel drainage system. They add water that is not absorbed by the grass that goes through, goes off into the flat panel system. There's a perimeter drain around the perimeter of the soccer stadium that then mitigates the stormwater runoff from that area. The stormwater manager for the walkways includes a bio retention facility along the north side of Jawan Drive and subsurface flat, sorry, and a subsurface pipe and stone system to the north. This is better seen, excuse me, in slide thirty three, if we can move forward.
Second.
Yep. Slide thirty three, just starting off his back and battling a little bit. This is the geothermal exchange system below the soccer stadium field that Ron mentioned before. And the next slide thirty four. And this is showing those systems I was talking about with the blue in the middle is the regional precast concrete vaults that are enclosed there as a regional system. To the north, you have the pipe and stone system in that orange color. And to the south, along Jawan Drive, you have the bio extension streetscape there, which goes well for those of you who recall the garage application prior to the bio retention along the south side of Jawan Drive as well. So you have bio retention of both sides of of Jawan Drive there. The storm on the each of these systems. And Ron, actually, to thirty five, please. And this here is the stormwater system for the field. Again, it's a pipe and stone system around the perimeter of the field in blue and a flat panel system on. and a flat panel system underneath the green area there in the middle. Each of these systems are open bottom systems. Aside from the regional system, each of these systems are open bottom systems and they use to promote recharge, provide treatment and provide that stormwater mitigation necessary for this project. And if we go to slide 36, let's start to talk about the soccer practice field. Again, similar images on the left, you have the existing conditions and on the right, the proposed stormwater from the existing conditions on the left. You have a parking area generally that cheats to an existing system. It's a closed drainage system and it discharges towards the faculty road area. It's predominantly white there is the paved parking area, gray is the building and green is the intermittent pervious areas. Similar to the soccer stadium, there was soil analysis and geotechnical reports done for this area that has a indicated predominant presence of D soils. There are, again, similar to soccer stadium, there's no known water quality best management practices or structures on this existing site. Going to the proposed conditions, you see here is the soccer practice facility on the right. You have walkways, landscape areas and associated utilities with that project. Moving on to slide 37. This is similar to the soccer stadium. The practice field is a, includes a subsurface flat panel system below it, which are those faint lines below the gray that takes stormwater, sheets it off under, through the flat panel system to the perimeter, pipe and stone system. That perimeter system is a larger perforated pipe system that allows to promote recharge the stormwater treatment and provide stormwater mitigation for that field. In the end, the controlled stormwater discharges will happen via closed drainage system to faculty road, similar as it does today in that direction. And then I think slide 38 would be for the next group.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So slide 38 is a transition slide about renderings and I'm just going to walk you through just an overview and we'll conclude with these, with these slides. So we've looked at slide 39 once before, this is the view from the southeastern corner of the stadium. This is that grove of existing trees that are being preserved. We're looking along Jadwon. You'll see the sort of landscape, a kind of arrival landscape here that JCFO has designed. And we're looking, you know, across to the north, northwest. There was also a comment about questions about a scoreboard. So the scoreboard will be located on the north side of the stadium at the top of that, that sloped area. That sloped area, by the way, does have some, some built-in seating for, for some fans at that end of the stadium. But that was also a staff comment about asking for the location of the stadium scoreboard. Now, if we, you'll see a key plan, now on slide 40, you'll see a key plan in the upper right that shows a little bit where we are here. We're at the southwest corner of the, of the soccer stadium. We're looking up this walkway, as I mentioned, this walkway will be a future kind of part of the campus network going north and south. And you'll see the sort of garden setting that James Corner talked about that's being created here. You'll see the concourse slightly elevated from the pedestrian location at this level. And as I said, this, this pathway is a very, very gentle ramp that comes up to level of 130 that allows you to enter. And then the field is down at 120. So you're beginning to see the, the western pavilion here. Slide 41, just further along that, that pathway here, some of the magnolia trees that James talked about and the sort of biodiversity that he talked about. Again, creating a kind of plaza setting for events at the entrance to the, to the western pavilion. Slide 42, we showed this one also, we're swinging around here to the northwest corner of the stadium, looking along that pathway on the western side down toward Jedwin Drive toward the parking structure and toward the, the practice field. And again, you see the, the sort of garden setting that's been created along the western side of the stadium. Slide 43, now we've come down to ground level, still on that western side. So we're looking to, from the north to the south. Again, you'll see here the, it's sloping up again to get to that elevation, 130 to the entry concourse. Here you can see more or less where that concourse is slightly elevated above the level here. You'll see some of the sort of built-in seating arrangements and under the sort of flowering trees that are created in this kind of garden setting at this corner of the stadium. Again, coming closer to the western pavilion, to the entry ticketing and restroom area. And then continuing past that location now, we're on the sort of southern leg of that north-south pathway that sits on the western side of the, of the stadium, coming back down toward Jedwin Drive. And you'll see the sort of, this is sort of the connection between this pathway and Jedwin Drive. Now slide 46, we are now on the southern side of the stadium where there's the greatest bit of topographic difference between the concourse at 130 and the sidewalk level parking structure would be just to the left side of the slide here. So we're looking to the, to the west along this major pedestrian pathway. This would be one of the pack cross, crosswalks that I showed in the site plan would come to this area. So there's been some benches built in right here so that people might gather, meet people before or after an event at the, at the stadium. And 47 is really the final slide, just an overview again of the, of the project. And with that, we're ready for a conversation, a discussion. As I've mentioned, we have a team of expert consultants who can handle any detailed questions that the, the board may have. Thank you.
Maybe we can, there we go. Mr. La Place?
Thank you. Maybe I guess there's questions for Ron or someone else on the architectural team. It goes to, it's a question of the function of the stadium. I noticed that the west side, which is the, the main entrance and closest to the center of campus and where the locker, the team rooms are and all the, the concourse. There's a carve out at the center, which would be basically the midfield seats, which are usually considered in a stadium to be the prime seating. You know, when you go to a stadium, whether it's a football stadium or a soccer stadium, or if you go to an arena for basketball, it'd be midcourt. But, but seating is usually, the prime seating is usually considered to be at the middle of the field. And you have it on the east side. But on the west side, which is the main entrance, it's been carved out for that, for that sideline seating and, and I guess the access to, to that level where the team rooms are. I'm just surprised that the prime seating wouldn't, would have been sacrificed on the west side. Could you talk a little bit about why that was done and, 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 you know, instead of incorporating seating right there in the middle of the western stands?
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things, then I think Venetius from Sasaki Associates might be able to give some, some more detail. And even Jeff Grayden, if we want to get into, into a lot more detail. But I think my understanding is that there, the Princeton soccer community has a unique culture of gathering. So they, they like to stand and mingle. And, and that's part of a culture of games, a lot of life on the concourse level. And so that was a place of arrival to give that over to that kind of central activity of gathering, mingling, chatting and watching the game at the same time. But I'm going to, Venetius is probably going to correct me and, and make it all right, but I'll ask Venetius to step in.
Okay. Venetius Gorgati, principal with Sasaki Associates, I'm a registered architect in New Jersey and in a number of other states in the United States. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of São Paulo in Brazil in architecture and urbanism. And I have a master's degree from Harvard University in architecture and urbanism.
And you're with the sports, you're with the sports group for Sasaki, right?
So, thank you, Luis. So in addition to what Ron said, he's absolutely right. There is a really strong cultural aspect to the, to the viewing of soccer and, well, as in many other sports on campus, but particularly to soccer. There is this sort of a multitude of experiences that they, they rejoice. If you had a chance to go to Roberts when the stadium was still up and running, you would see folks congregating in special moments at the corners where there is a break on the, on this, on the seating. There would be a lot of congregation as they came into the stadium from the center. There would be a little bit of competition between sitting and, and standing because folks would like to, to congregate there. One important thing that we did with this design is the previous Roberts had an issue that the cameras would film the soccer game. And opposite the cameras to the east, there was nothing. There was just the benches and the open practice field. There was a conscious decision in this design to place the concessions on the east side and create the most density of sitting in front of the concessions to the left and right. So the cameras would be filming where most of the seats would be filled with people. As a complement to that, at the main entrance, there was this desire to protect the benches of the players on the west side and the direct access from the locker rooms, which was really critical to the coaches. So that led us to create this idea of a balcony, which is both a place for congregation, but also if you are on a wheelchair, for instance, that's a sort of a perfect location for the, for watching the game as well. And then lastly, just in the spirit of the diversity of experiences, behind the goals is a traditional area where the students congregate. They like to kind of converse with the opposite goalie. So you'll see that those are also special moments, both north and south. So just to complete Ron's statement, it had to do with experience. It also has to do with the coaches wanting that direct access from the locker rooms to the field and the west side being the best location for them.
Thank you.
Question from board members, Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Chow.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I appreciate Ron touching on virtually every question that I had in his presentation. So thank you for carefully addressing the reports. I have a couple of questions. One, in relation to the lights, the renderings showed similar lights on the camp, Finney Campbell fields. Are those existing or are they, you know, proposed and would be put up after?
Those are existing lights.
Okay. The, you addressed the issue of the sound from the public address system. But I would be curious to know if anyone looked at the crowd noise, especially from games that might go after 10:00 PM. And, you know, wondering if there's a way to somehow make sure that games don't go after 10:00 PM in the event that, you know, you can't turn down the crowd noise.
Well, I'm going to let Emily Purcell talk about that. We, we thought about maybe having a requirement that no goals could be scored after 10:00 PM. But that probably wouldn't work. So Emily can talk about how to, a little bit about the crowd noise. And I think, does Emily need to give her qualifications?
She's qualified as she's been sworn in. So Emily, if you can give her education experience.
Sure. So I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in mechanical engineering from Purdue University. I have nine years of experience with WJHW. We are a specialty acoustics design and consulting firm. And, you know, I've worked on noise modeling at NCAA football stadiums, minor league baseball, major league soccer stadiums and amphitheaters across the country.
Luis, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Oh.
Thank you. We, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Thanks. So to address the, the question on crowd noise, you know, that was not in our scope to model because it's kind of outside of the control of the system. Generally speaking, because crowd noise, while there are, you know, more sources than with a loudspeaker system, they are all lower in level as well as being lower to the ground. So in our experience, crowd noise does not travel as far from the stadium as a sound system noise would.
Okay. And then I had two questions for the stormwater engineer, one of which is you referenced the predominantly type D soils that were found. But in our stormwater consultant's reports, he took issue with that. He was saying that there was a mix of different soil types, B as well as D. And I just, you know, want to make sure you've been addressing that concern that our, that our consultant had identified. And then the second question, it's a very minor one, but there's a, there's a leg of the project area that extends up Fitz Randolph. I tried to figure, it seemed to have some kind of utility line in it with a D label, which I couldn't find in the, in the key, the legend. I saw that it appeared on one of your slides, the stormwater slide. So I assume it has something to do with your system. And I wonder if you can explain what is going on in that, that leg.
Absolutely, David. So to answer your first question, we have, we have met with Joe, as with the garage project and also the forthcoming Tiger project as well. We've gone through each of his comments on that. There are a few items that we've addressed in the hydraulic modeling, the hydrologic modeling on the project that we've been able to address very minor tweaks and to the model that we did send over for review from Joe on that. And we'll include that in a future revised stormwater report. To get to your comment though, about the hydraulic soil group, what we, what we reviewed with Joe was that there was a lot of testing throughout this site. And when you drill down, no pun intended, but when you drill down on the permeability tests on the project, there were on this project, a couple B results, if you will, hydraulic soil group B results for permeability over in the, in the soccer stadium area. And there were a couple hydraulic soil group C results for permeability over in the soccer practice area. Looking over at the soccer stadium area, oh, and the rest remaining were, were D, all right? When you look over at the soccer stadium area, that one, one drilling, one drilled borehole area indicated those two tests, and those were directly adjacent to Fitz Randolph Road. So it was, it was a bit outside of the area that we were analyzing. So the area, the, the bores that fell within the stadium area where we were working were more along the line of hydraulic soil group D. For the soccer practice area, the hydraulic soil group C soils were falling in an area that's previously disturbed within there. And then the rest were D soils within the soccer practice area. So our feeling on that was that it is D soils. And the geotechnical report also stated that for this project site, they would consider it D-type soils as well. So that's where that information came from. And we will also include further, everything I just told you is going to be added to that stormwater report. So it kind of explains a bit better as well. All right. Regardless, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, just, I wanted to remind you of the other question.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. And the, the other question is that dog leg that goes up there. That is a pipe to allow from the regional system heading northbound on Fitz Randolph. Then goes over on Western Way West for a little bit. That is for the future, oops. There we go. Yep, to that, that pink dot right there on slide 34. That is a manhole that's going to be left there. The pipe is going to be left there for future upstream projects to connect into for the regional system. That's what that is.
Great, thanks. That's, those were my questions.
If I can just back up what Mark said, we, Jim and I, Jim Purcell and I've had a few meetings.
Joe, if you could raise your right hand, I'm going to swear. You swear affirm that the testimony about to give you the truth.
I do.
Please say your full name for the record.
First name Joseph, middle initial J, last name Scoopian, S K U P I E N. Just like at the bottom of the screen, look at that. Mr. Corner, I just want, again, excellent, I'm glad you brought that up. Subsequent to that. Subsequent to that report, uh, and Mark is right, there's a lot of soil data. And not only horizontally, right, Mark, but vertically as well. Each each of those tests are at a different vertical level below ground, and it was a lot of data to review. Uh, we sat down, put our heads together, and I I concur that for the design of the stormwater system, the the hydrologic soil group D is is the appropriate choice.
Which means we're not going to get recharge basically.
I could add on to that. We're, we're not counting on getting recharge. They are designing systems that if if any recharge happens, it will happen, but they're not taking credit for it in their calculations of water quality or quantity. They're not taking credit for it.
If I swan you went for this.
Up for this hearing. Sorry, no. Earlier you did.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give is it will be the truth?
I do.
So so swan. Please say your full name for the record.
James Purcell, P U R C E L L, you know, Spalanous Engineer. And as I said, they they're not taking credit for any recharge, but they are designing a system to allow recharge if if it possibly could happen.
Okay, great.
Uh, Mark, since you were talking, um, and I'm looking through the reports to make sure we addressed everything. I I noticed in the environmental commission, they they raised some questions about permeable, and I was wondering if you could just touch upon your choices here um, in relation to not providing that that pavement in the permeable.
All right, be happy to, Chris. So in regards to permeable pavers in porous asphalt, they are a good solution for stormwater management when looking at low impact development. We did consider them on this project, uh, but it was decided that green infrastructure at the south side of the stadium and the protection of the adjacent wooded area south of the practice field is a is a better suited to meet the project needs and and the regulatory requirements. But you know, as you look at an alternative to permeable pavers and porous asphalt, the project is instead treating and managing stormwater using bioretention, as I just mentioned, and what Jim Purcell was just talking about, promoting recharge through open bottom systems, uh, which are comparable to permeable pavers and porous asphalt without taking uh, credit for that open bottom system uh, in regards to stormwater mitigation and treatment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Mr. Chow, you had questions?
Yeah, um, there's, there was talk of lining up the, what is it, the northeast corner of the field, the and a little path over there. It seems to me that there should be a crosswalk there. Because you have a sidewalk on both sides of the road. And so somebody might want to cross over to the to the east side of Fitz Randolph. I I live like three blocks from from the spot, and I was just walking there today. So the crosswalk would really help, especially after events, both at the soccer game and for basketball games at Jadwin, because uh, if you ever, I I've been going to, I'm a soc- a big soccer fan and a basketball fan. I've been going to games for twenty years. So when people leave, um, there's a lot of people walking up Fitz Randolph into the local neighborhoods. And just having that crosswalk there would help with the circulation away from those events. And then I I want to kind of follow up on Mr. Laplace's comments about the the lack of seating on at the midfield. I I understand Mr. Gorgati's comments that people do gather. And in my experience at the old field, you you did have a lot of people up on the platform, but they were above uh, the people sitting at the midfield. So you had a nice atmosphere. So you know, between the people sitting just below the people on the on the concourse, there was a good atmosphere. If you don't have those people sitting down there, I don't think you have the atmosphere. So I think fewer people would gather on that concourse. And I think related to that, I I think the fans would prefer to sit on the on the east side, um, as was mentioned. So I I had a question, is there only ticket entrance on the west side, or can you enter from the east side?
I believe it's both.
Okay. So I I really think there'll be very little atmosphere on the west side. Everybody will go to the east side because it's closer to the parking garage and you'll have the concourse right in front of the concession stand, and you'll have the seating right at midfield. And I think the west side will be empty. So that's, that's just my feeling from my experience from going to many games over the years.
I'll let Vinicius comment if you want to about, you know, some of the configuration issues. I would just note that we listen to the coaches a lot. And this this really reflects the the coaches' preferences. I'm going to share my screen, though, one more time because I I want to come back to the comment about the crosswalk. Just make sure I understand it. You can see this?
Yes, yes.
So the the drawing does not show clearly, but there is a crosswalk right here at this, at the into the between the sidewalk at Fitz Randolph on the west over to the daycare. Is that where you were suggesting?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we have an existing crosswalk there. So good point, but I just think we failed to show it on our drawing.
Okay, great. Yeah.
I just checked Google Maps and it's it's there.
Okay. Yeah, there's definitely very big flow after basketball games. Yeah.
Thank you. Let's see, did Mr. Gorgati, did you want to?
Uh, I, yes, I can. I can add a bit more to that. I I I understand Mr. Chow's comment and and in in honesty, we we talked a lot about that, not only with the coaches, but with the athletic director. There were a couple of, uh, even from the coach's perspective, a couple of competing interests. In other words, they wanted to be at field level in the locker rooms. And as I mentioned, the west pavilion was the best location because it's the closest to the to the uh, practice field. And also, it's it's where most of the infrastructure is, you know, we have stairs and elevators and an elevator. So for them, that location is their home base. It was also the closest to their current locker rooms that they will continue to use as as uh, Ron mentioned. They also wanted to preserve a little bit of distance in between the 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 seating and the bleachers and the players, because it can get a little intense. I mean, in the previous Roberts, the the benches were all the way across the field, so they were very insulated from, you know, opinionated parents like me and also people who get really excited about the game. And so they were, they 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 worked very closely with us to make sure that the players would feel safe and protected, both our players at Princeton as well as the visitors. And and I think at the end, the, I don't want to say it was a compromise, because I think nobody really felt like a compromise. We felt like we got to a balance where there will be more of a standing relationship to a central point. But at the same time, because it's one of the main entrances, people felt like it would always be an area of interest. You know, the press boxes are up there, and there is always some sort of activity going around that. So I I fully understand your comment. I mean, you know, in a normal stadium, a larger stadium, everything would be higher up, and you could have the bleachers seven feet over the field, and then you have the benches and everybody is over there. But this is a much more intimate condition. So I think we in the end, felt very, very good about the balance of the four sides.
Can I just pick up on that, that a little bit the comment that Vinicius just made? We didn't make a big deal out of it, but it was really one of the driving factors was, and maybe you've noticed it, was to really knit this stadium into the topography. We 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 tried to make it a piece of landscape rather than a kind of, you know, a piece of architecture. So I just wanted to reinforce that that was a kind of driving strategy to to nestle the stadium into the topography.
Mr. Laplace?
Yes, thank you. I just had one more follow up question regarding the seating. Because and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the games will be in the afternoon.
You know, again, I I think, yes, there will be some games. I'm not sure if it's the majority of games, so.
But generally, they're in the PM, not the AM?
Yes.
Well, it seems to me that that would put the sun in the eyes of the folks sitting on the east stands. And you know, it seems to me it would have made more sense to have the prime midfield seating on the west side because then they're not staring into the sun. I, maybe the Sasaki folks can tell us about this, but I always assumed that with stadium design, you really take solar orientation and sunlight and glare into consideration.
Yes, you're right, relative to the sun orientation being an important consideration. One of the driving forces is that the press box should never be facing west, because obviously you would compromise not only the ability of the of the folks in the press box who are, you know, announcing the game to do their job probably, but also the cameras themselves. I mean, they would get it in in the in the face. We did do, uh, we do do some studies for the for the season. It's true that there may be moments when the sun is at a certain position that hits, but for the most part, it's a very common condition to have, you know, uh, the the stage have seating that faces you you know, west. It's not a a tough condition for for the viewer, so to speak. But the the press box usually takes the first precedence in that setup, and then things unfold from there.
There are questions from Mr.
Zenon's had his hand up for quite a while.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I I have not seen you, Zenon. Zenon, since you, your hand's been up for a while. You go first and then Mr. O'Donnell.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, David.
So I want to loop back to stormwater management. The PEC made several recommendations, um, one of which was increasing the use of naturalized stormwater basins. We commend the university for including that strip on the south side. But um, I wonder if it's possible to incorporate more use of the landscaped areas for stormwater management. You know, you have some beautiful gardens there, and I I think that it's great that you're including them. But I think that those the spaces could be used for stormwater management as well. And you know, even though the soils are classified as D, those basins could, you know, have um, storage and, you know, they can be brought different types of soils, and and so a certain amount can be stored. And then once it overflows, you know, then go into the system. And so I, you know, I think that it it would be interesting to hear the applicant talk more about that. Um, on a similar note, I guess one of the other recommendations is using rainwater harvesting. And it, I noticed that there are a lot of structural stormwater devices throughout the the field. And, um, you know, I was wondering if it if it was considered to use some of that water for I mean, for for irrigation purposes, because right now, um, most likely you'll be bringing in potable water where, um, you know, instead you could be using rainwater, which is, you know, doesn't require the the treatment and energy and that is involved in treatment. And finally, uh, also, we we did make recommendations about moving or shifting the the practice field to natural turf uh, as opposed to artificial. And so it would be good to hear that again, talk about that. I think that it we we did, the PC did have a very informative presentation from the university's expert on on turf. And uh, he he talked about, you know, the pros and cons. But um, it, one of the things that the PC is really concerned about is the fact that essentially artificial turf fields are are plastic. It's just a carpet. It's a massive carpet. And so it not only takes petroleum to to create the the astroturf, but when you're done with it, you know, oftentimes these turf fields end up in in a landfill, and so it's a huge amount of waste. And I and I do know that there are companies that are recycling these, but um, I I don't know how if there's if it's possible to get commitment to make sure that, you know, the turf field is is disposed of in a proper way. I'm sure that the university, um, you know, with their commitments to sustainability would would consider that. And then finally, um, the PC made recommendations to use a low carbon concrete. I did notice that there was concrete, it's a decent amount of concrete in the structure. And so concrete is one of the big carbon emitters out there. And so I would just be curious to to hear whether there was any consideration for that. Thanks.
Mark, why don't you handle the stormwater questions? Then we'll turn to Jeff to talk about the astroturf. And then I can come back and just give an update on the uh, carbon cure, low carbon concrete.
Yeah, I think that'll be great. And as you know, I think I I got all your questions here. If I missed something, you know, let me know. Uh, as I go through it too, I'm going to ask James Corner to talk a little bit about the landscaping and why the design is the way it is around the facilities. But let's just start with the, you know, the stormwater, integrating that in the landscaping. So looking at the the east campus holistically, you know, we found that, you know, having that roadway bioretention uh, on the project, uh, it really accentuates the roadways, treats that groundwater and does a great job there for the mitigation as well with the stormwater. When if you now zoom in on the stadium itself, looking for other areas for that, uh, for a rain garden per se, you have to look as well at the general topography and the the trees that we would like to save that exist yet today. And so although we did look for other opportunities for, um, you know, surface features, we, such as rain gardens, um, we weren't able to find that because of the architecture of knitting the soccer stadium into uh, the the natural landscape around it. And so the topography all sheets down into the stadium and the stadium treats it and mitigates the stormwater there for itself. Um, and the um, and the adjacent athletic fields without impacting the usability of the adjacent athletic fields. And again, uh, with the existing trees and the areas that uh, the landscape architect has designated for people to congregate. So that's just looking at the soccer stadium, uh, looking over at the soccer practice field. You know, with the uh, existing parking lot that's there today. We've actually, you know, transformed it to that, as you were mentioning, synthetic turf field, but all that landscaping to the west of it, uh, the the undulations, uh, the look that they were going for there. And again, without uh, taking away from the natural wooded area that we want to keep there and taking away from the landscape uh, architecture that they wanted to do with the undulations and the grading. It was really challenging to find areas there for rain gardens, down gradient that we could use. But we do have the rain gardens adjacent to there and the Denunzio drop off area uh, as well, sorry, the the Denunzio circle area at the intersection of Jadwin Stadium as well as the south side of of Jadwin. So where we can, we look to fit in rain gardens. And we feel like we did a a good balance of having the surface facilities as well as the subsurface facilities to add that extra bit of mitigation there. In regards to rainwater harvesting, I'm sure um, others could add a bit more to it, but we did. Um, you're you're right, there are the, you know, say, the the regional system and other areas, we looked at it as an opportunity for rainwater collection, understanding and appreciating that as a as a good opportunity. But we didn't pursue it on this project. We felt that the need to conserve water through the use of adaptive vegetation that doesn't require irrigation after establishment was more appropriate with the with the project needs here and didn't work with the, excuse me, rainwater harvesting for this project in particular. I don't know if James wants to add anything more in regards to landscape and integrating the stormwater features there.
No, I don't think so. I think you've covered it very well.
Thank you. And then I think after rainwater, rain gardens and harvesting, you went on to questions on the turf field, which I know, Ron, you had somebody else you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I think Jeff, I think Jeff Grayden, if Jeff could come in and talk us, talk about that.
So Jeff, I think we have.
So Jeff, I think we have you sworn in, but if you could give us a little bit of your background.
For by my degree, I'm an entomologist and an agronomist. I've worked at Princeton University since 1976 and directly for the athletic department since 1990. In my role, I'm responsible for the care and maintenance, in, in large part, some of the design of our capital projects. And I maintain the old soccer field since it was built in the Lori Love Field before that. Princeton Stadium, when we originally had a grass field. And we converted that to a synthetic field, frankly, because it couldn't handle more than about 25 games a year, we started losing the field. So the demanding programs of soccer sort of require a very highly maintained surface. We start the season typically about an inch and a quarter with bluegrass. And by the end of the season, we're mowing that down to about seven eighths of an inch. And the field has to be very, very good. If we were to have a natural grass practice field, the expectation would be we'd mow it at the same height. We would maintain it the same way. Well, unfortunately, we practice six or seven days a week. We also use our practice fields for club, club soccer, which is not varsity and intramurals. So we have to have an artificial field to have a high quality soccer program. And we have two very good varsity soccer teams. You asked about recycling turf at the end of its life. So we just replaced the surface in shared field and that was sent to a plastics recycler. And yes, it did cost a little bit more money, but we believe it's the right thing to do. And the recycling process frankly is not perfect, but it's getting better. There's a new system that will be online about a year from, year and a month from now, where it will actually take the turf and break it into the components. It'll actually separate the nylon from the polyester or whatever products are in there, whatever polymers are there. It's being used in Europe and Holland. It's very successful there. In fact, it should cost us less per ton to recycle than currently paying. So we, we've moved away from the typical chrome rubber infill. Our infill now is a TPE which runs cooler. They're green color, so they don't absorb all the heat. We're going shorter pile turf. We're going less infill than we did 10 years ago. Turf has evolved. I think you were present when I talked a little bit about the evolution of turf. Turf is moving in the right direction and about 50% of the teams in our league play their games on artificial turf. But our program was emphatic when we built Roberts and they're still emphatic that they wanted a natural grass game field. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Great. And then there was the question about the concrete and the storm.
Right. I'll, I'll talk about that one. So we definitely support the goal to try to take advantage of technologies that will reduce the amount of carbon in concrete. We are, it requires a close partnership with industry and it requires specific industries that are serving this region. So some of the, we've been working, we have not yet begun to work with the industry for the concrete block or the concrete on this particular project, but we're learning on other projects, for example, where, that are exploring carbon cure. Working with Clayton Concrete and in, in New Jersey. And they are targeting a 10% reduction in cement for their concrete mixes to seem to achieve the same strength that they would get without carbon cure. And they have not been able to achieve that yet. They're only getting 3% reduction. So we're not getting the results yet that we need to have a successful combination of the carbon cure technology, the reduction of carbon and the strength that's required for structures. So it's not totally in our control. As I said, it's, it's a, requires a partnership with industry. We want to leverage our projects as much as possible to encourage and push and nudge industry toward adopting these technologies. And it's, I think, you know, we're, we're not there yet, but we are engaged with them and trying to get there.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions and one is not about stormwater management, but the other one is, so I think I'll start with that one first. Mr. Gabriel, you met, you showed the systems for the stormwater management on the fields themselves and both the stadium and the practice field will use the pipe and stone around the perimeter and then the stone and panel for the field itself. Can you just explain briefly, how does that work with both a natural grass field and an artificial surface?
Sure. So I could get into that in somewhat detail, but I know that we have a designer from Sasaki on board who could get into that more detail than I can. So let me ask Sasaki to come in and discuss that.
Hi, everyone. I'm Zach Crisco with Sasaki. I'm a civil engineer. I have a undergraduate from Tufts University, graduated in 2004. Been practicing civil engineering since then. I'm a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey and more than 30 other states. And I can speak to field design. We've done a number of fields in-house.
Thank you, Mr. Crisco. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. So yeah, the question was about how the panel system and the natural and synthetic turf systems work from a stormwater perspective. I'll start with the natural turf field. It's a 12-inch soil based system that's for high performance turfs such as the soccer field. Below that is 12 inches of stone within that stone system panel drainage. So rainwater that hits the natural turf field, anything that drains through that 12 inches of soil will then hit that stone system, be captured within the panel drains and then cheap those drains to the perimeter system that also sits within a stone bed. As mentioned, all the systems have assumed the hydraulic soil group D to ensure that everything's properly designed. But there's ample opportunity for infiltration within that stone bed if it does hit pockets of free draining soils. At the synthetic turf field, there's the synthetic turf surface. And then below that is 18 inches of stone, again, underland by panel drains. Those panel drains can connect to a perimeter drain that sits within a larger stone bed. Again, ample opportunities for infiltration where the soils below allow.
Is the permeability of both the artificial turf and the natural fairly consistent across the two?
The artificial turf is more free draining than the natural turf because of the soil systems, but both are very well draining compared to sort of a typical lawn area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That helps me a lot. And I guess the, the other question would be from Mr. McCoy. On the panel, on the slide that showed various circulation elements, there was the walkway, pedestrian walkway along faculty road. Is that going to be, is that going to remain the, the same walkway that is there? Or is that area along faculty south of the garage and the practice field going to be upgraded and landscaped with, with new lighting as well?
That's not part of the scope of this project, so it will remain as, as it is.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn.
Just a quick question, and I know I have someone from the athletics office here who would probably say no. But are there non-athletic events anticipated to be hosted at the stadium?
Jeff, you want to handle that?
There are not non-athletic events planned in that stadium. It's a natural grass field. We have other venues for non-athletic type events.
Great. Thank you. Can I ask a quick follow-up on that?
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Chow.
Just are there other, is that going to be a soccer only stadium or are there, can other sports use it as well, such as lacrosse or field hockey or?
We, we have a wonderful lacrosse stadium. We have a wonderful field hockey stadium. And we had a wonderful soccer stadium that was exclusive to soccer. And because of its natural grass, that is the only thing we do in there. My question is a follow-up to Mr. Quinn's question. The fireworks for, for alumni weekend, where's that going to go? And then if Princeton town itself ever gets its firework act together again, where, where could we possibly have it? I can answer that one.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Fireworks are launched from Lake, right adjacent to Lakefield. There's a small parking area over the lake. There are ample seating areas on Finney Campbell on the upper banks. It's, it's called Strubing Field up on Strubing and Clark Field. People sit on the artificial turf. It can rain, you know, just before and they don't get wet. But I don't believe you will have any kind of view of it from the soccer stadium. You might have something from the east side, but there's still ample room for fireworks. We've had discussions with oh, I can't remember her name, but with the alumni council.
But presumably the new practice field could be a place for people to gather to watch fireworks or not?
It's probably too close. Able to get a good view where there's, where they're shot from.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there other, other questions from board members? Okay. I think that I saw that a question had been posed in the Q and A. Okay, never mind.
Looks like. I, I suggested he raise his hand so that it could be public record.
Okay, good. Thank you. In that case, that we'll move into that portion of the hearing. I'm opening it for public comment. So any member of the public that would like to ask questions or testify about this should raise your hand by clicking on the icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We will take comments in the order in which hands are raised and Mr. Cohen is in, is in charge and in control of that process. Do we have people lining up, Mr. Cohen?
We do. The first person will be Olga Troyan Skaya. I'm bringing her over now.
And Ms. Troyan Skaya, you'll be sworn in by our attorney, Mr. Mahler, as I mentioned at the opening of the meeting.
Hi, everyone.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address.
Olga Troyanskaya, T R O Y A N S K A Y A, 168 Fitzrandall Road, Princeton, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I am, have the dubious pleasure of being that closest residence that was pointed out to by Ron. And so I have actually three questions. The first one is to ask a little more about the noise. So I have to say, especially as also an employee of the university, I'm extremely disappointed that the university aims generally to barely pass within the not so progressive New Jersey state legal limits on the, these ordinances as opposed to being at all progressive and even just reasonable and considered on the neighborhood and the construction plans and the plans for the stadium. So with the noise, I have two young children and 65 decibels at that border, which is, yes, not quite touching my house, but quite close to it is a lot worse than having a fraternity pretty much right down the street. And at 10:00 PM with young children, you can imagine at 9:59, I'm sorry, this will be a problem. But also as somebody raised, I appreciate the board member who raised that point about the noise of the crowd. Does that mean that at 10 every day, I have to call every time there's a game and at 10:00 PM there is above 65 decibel noise from the crowd, I have to call the police? And just beyond that, I would really love to hear how you guys came up with the modeling. Did you, for example, consider the wind, which I have had ample opportunity, I'm a data scientist, so I've had ample opportunity to collect and measure data as the construction is right across the street for the stadium. And it's basically routinely, I would say, three days out of the week at least, quite often more above 70 decibel measurements at my porch. And that's really loud for the whole day. And so the ambient noise in the neighborhood at 10:00 PM is 40 or below, 40 to 65 is quite a bit louder. So I would love to know what the models are, what happens at that boundary, right? It doesn't suddenly disappear. It's still quite loud. And how environmental factors are taken into it and what the control will be at when the magic hour of 10 strikes.
Emily, can you respond to that?
Sure. So the modeling, we include the sound system design, the WHW put together, and that includes details and specifications about the speakers that's provided by the manufacturer. And we look at both like a, like a pop music spectrum, but also the more common of a speech spectrum going through the sound. And then we incorporate that with the site grading and the architectural design that was provided to us by Sasaki. And we kind of include topographical effects, the ground effects. We do not include foliage and we do not include atmospheric or meteorological effects. That's to kind of maintain a consistent noise environment that's not dependent on the time of year. But we also do not include.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna say, we also don't, didn't include the ambient noise levels in our modeling system. In terms of how we're going to meet the 10:00 PM limit, you know, there is going to be a control system on, in the sound system at, you know, kind of within the programming of it to limit the sound so that it's at 65 dB at the proxy line. And then at 10:00 PM, you know, those controls can also drop down the sound for the sound system. And this is a control that programmed into the system. It's either behind the locked rack door or would require the integrator to come out and recompile the program. This is not something that can be overridden by the operator or the PA announcer.
Would you comment by any chance from, so right now, the ambient noise, both according to university measurements and, you know, based on my measurements as well, is, you know, at maximum 40 at night. So 40 to 65, what is the difference in terms of how much louder like times as opposed to just the decibels? And I have a pretty good idea, but I would love for the board to hear you say it.
So, you know, I have not done ambient noise measurements. That was not part of our scope, so I can't speak to it. It depends on of the noise.
But could you just, 40 to 65, that difference, how many times louder is that?
You know, it's, you know, decibels are logarithmic scale, so it'd be, you know, probably about, you know, 10 times more energy, but that's not how, you know, people interpret noise. That's not how hearing works. You know, a 10 dB difference is roughly twice as loud and that's a, that's how, you know, it's interpreted by people. So that's, that's the answer. But again, that, it also depends on the characteristic of the noise. And so that's what we can't speak to. It's more than just a single number level.
So I just want the board to think about this and the fact that basically there is no control for wind, which makes a huge effect on how loud so basically if the wind is blowing towards the neighborhood, this border is just completely artificial made up comment. And the fact that actually the sound power, so it did is logarithmic, so 40 to 65 is actually 360 times more in terms of the sound, 16, sorry, 316. So it is not a minor difference compared to ambient noise at 10% PM in a neighborhood with many young children where people are living. So I would really appreciate you guys thinking about this. So my second comment is, and you know, the fact that there's basically no real plan for what happens at 10:00 PM when the crowd is loud and rowdy, et cetera. The second comment is about the lights. I have the pleasure of enjoying the football stadium lights that are up on every night of all night, 24/7. Luckily, the football stadium was a pretty enclosed. Luckily, the football stadium was a pretty enclosed sort of, you know, system, so it's not quite as bright. But how much light pollution, what is the plan in terms of having these lights? Like, are they going to turn off after the games or are they going to be on just like the football stadium?
Jeff, can you talk about the management of the lights at the soccer stadium?
I'm not sure what lights you're talking about in the football stadium, but I can assure you that the event lights, the ones at the top are not on all night. And when we built the stadium, it had a early generation computer control system that frankly didn't work very well. And a number of years ago, I could look up the date if I needed to, but I'm going to guess four or five years ago, we were able to put all the, all the event lights, the ones that are on the large racks onto a system called Automatic Logic. We use that to control things like the fountain, heat in buildings. It's very robust. It's not prone to failure. And I can't remember the last time we had a complaint about the event lights in the stadium. Now, in the wintertime, we put the bubble in the stadium. And when the bubble's in the stadium, there are no lights on at all, just the lights within the bubble. So you may be, you may be seeing the fixtures that were called the C, D and J fixtures that around the perimeter of the stadium, there are gray can, sort of, I'm going to guess about 14 by 14. And, and those lights are there for the walkways outside the stadium. But those are not event lights. Our new stadium will have the micro light, I'm sorry, the Automatic Logic system in it. And it only allows windows when lights can operate. So there's only two people on campus who can override that system. I'm one of them and my assistant is one of them. And we have them programmed so they shut off. The coach has to use a key to turn it on, but it automatically will shut off if a coach forgets.
So basically, sorry, what you were saying, so I am seeing, I don't know what they're called, but I'm seeing basically all around the stadium, big giant windows of lights. And I agree, they're probably not event lights, but so basically the soccer stadium lights will be off at night is what you're saying.
The event lights for sure will be off. The lights you're seeing on the top row of the stadium are the, the third, the third row of the stadium needs those lights on for emergency egress.
So I guess the question is, would it be possible to get some measurements to the board and to the public in terms of how much light pollution beyond just the normal, you know, lighting of the street? That would be
We do have that. And it's far less
We have a graphic for that.
It's far less than any other site on campus, these new LED fixtures. We have them in 1952 stadium and we'll have them here. And the cutoff is unbelievable. It's way better than anything you've seen before.
Maybe Emily can walk us through this, this slide. Jeff, you can walk us through this slide. Sorry, Emily, you're, you're sound. Sorry, trying to scare you there.
This, this slide shows how many horizontal foot candles are measured at certain lines, distances away from the stadium. And we're down to, you know, point zero to one foot candle. You know, we're less than one foot candle at your home. It's very, very, very low. Within the stadium though, we're, we're running 75 to 90, but the, the cutoff on these, we used to use internal glare controls. LEDs don't have them anymore. They're, they're designed to cut off light very sharply. And, and poles are higher today because you get better uniformity on the field and you get less trespass or spill light. As the pole comes down, the angle of the light becomes, you know, more parallel with the field and it tends to shoot farther. So this light system was designed to be very good on the field and very good in terms of trespass light.
Thanks. All right. So, and then my third question is about traffic. I was wondering if you've studied reasonably, you know, and what the conclusions were about the traffic control now that the, on top of the regular parking at the garage, but there will also be soccer stadium event parking in addition to the football parking, et cetera. And how that's going to affect traffic in the neighborhood?
So, so when we presented the garage application and talked about the parking study and the matter and, and everything that went into it, this was already anticipated and entered into that study and talked about. We do have our traffic consultant here. George, are you around?
Yes.
If you'd like to briefly comment on that question?
And if you
Oh wait, I'm sorry. We gotta have you qualify. Yep. George, I believe you were sworn in already, but we, can you go through your credentials, please?
Yes, good evening. I have an engineering degree specializing in transportation from Switzerland, the Polytechnic School from Rosen. Have a master's degree from Stanford University, have been working as a traffic planner, traffic engineer for more than 40 years, started working in Princeton in 1982 and testified numerous times before the planning board and zoning board, regional planning board at that time. And I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer, as well as in other states.
Thank you, Mr. Jacques Mar. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. To address the question, yes, we did study the traffic loads. And we looked at the traffic loads generated by the soccer games. We looked at the soccer games that took place in 2019. There were 19 soccer games that took place. We know the average number of attendees at these games. They were, in average, they were about 391 on this, for these games, the highest game had 852 people attending. And when you translate that into vehicle trips, the vehicle trips are then in the range of about 200 vehicle trips. There is occasionally what's called a postseason game where the stadium may fill completely to capacity. And that translates into maybe 700 to 800 vehicle trips generated by these soccer games. That kind of traffic load is less than the traffic load that's generated by the full parking garage that we studied in great detail. You know, the parking garage is planned to have 1,552 spaces. When we did the very comprehensive traffic study for the garage, we looked at the impacts of those traffic loads at all the intersections in your neighborhood. And, you know, those have been studied in detail. We submitted them to the municipality for the review by your traffic consultant. We identified, you know, a monitoring program to monitor these impacts. And we also identified mitigation measures. But in general, these traffic loads can be handled fairly easily with the existing network that we have.
Thank you. I, I think it is, it would be really important to have serious mitigation measures as traffic continuously comes to a standstill whenever there is just a football game. But I think the main thing, I'll sign off and let others speak, but I do really, really hope the board and the university will take serious, put serious thought into the noise issue as clearly simple things like not taking environmental effects into account, which are absolutely known very well to affect the noise. And I think understood even colloquially, but also quantitatively and qualitatively is really important as well as just the, the current approach to the magical border that actually isn't really there. And the likelihood of high noise after 10:00 PM that can be controlled. It would be really great to have answers to all of those points. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next member of the public is Todd Cronin. If you could raise your right hand. You bring him over there, is he here?
He should be.
Mr. Cronin?
I'm here, but I, it looks like my screen is not on.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address.
My name is Todd Cronin at C R O N A N and I'm at 44 Hartley Avenue. So if you look on those plans, you'll see me in the bottom right corner. Throughout, I, I realize that the time is late, so I will be very brief here. I guess I was struck by what I take to be attention in the presentation between two aspects of the, of the planning here. On the one hand, there's the internal sense of the project and then there's the external and internals, that's relates to Princeton University. External is it faces towards the neighborhood. Internally, there's a lot of discussion of best practices. So I heard discussions of biodiversity from James, I heard reclamation from Mark Gabriel and various other matters in terms of stormwater. And then when it came to the neighborhood, this is the very stark phrase from, from Ron, will comply with the Jersey noise code. Now, New Jersey noise code, as Olga just mentioned, is not among the most progressive in the country, to say the least. Is far from it. If you take standard noise codes across the country, it is ambient sound plus six. So you have 40 plus six. So any new construction should not go over four, over six, over, over that, over the ambient level. This is going to be at the limit. And I guess I go back to what Olga mentioned, and that is to say, is there any interest on the university's part in adhering to best practices when you're facing outside of the university? For light and sound.
I think we do adhere to best practices.
But I
I don't know. The question is, there's laws that regulate sound and we comply with it.
It's Complying is, is not the same as best practices.
I
Is that unclear?
No, I think that there's a very specific code that outlines regulatory requirements. And that code is specifically addressed. And the university has continued to look at sound very carefully and has integrated into all of its project. In this particular case, we are talking about a sound system. What's very simple about the sound system is it could be adjusted. And it could be adjusted not manually through the box office, but adjusted on a level that other people can adjust it. So essentially, we will make it comply with the rules and regulations. We could have it programmed to decrease so the sound levels will match at 10 o'clock automatically without anybody doing anything. And that's basically what is being proposed here. So if there is an occasion where there is an issue, then it's a sound system. So we can address it fairly easily. So after it's constructed and after it is built, if there is an issue and a violation, it's going to be easy to cure.
Christopher, I don't, I guess you're not getting the impulse behind my question. My, my question is not whether you will comply with the law. I understand that Princeton University and every other institution in this country has to comply by the, to the law. My question is whether Princeton has an interest or commitment, considering we didn't get to the second issue on the agenda, that's environmental, an environmental structure of improving the nature of the neighborhood rather than complying with the law. And as I say, in terms of best practices, I'm talking about other practices around the country. If you were to do even the most basic Google search around the country for decibel levels in cities and suburban residents, suburban areas. For instance, if you look at Stanford University or the other, the other geothermal heat exchange plant is, you'll see that there, the best practices of sound, the sound management there has, is, it looks like utopia compared to what is being proposed here. Their, their, their plants and their structures have no, no relation to a residential neighborhood. They are, they are within, they are, they are, there is no relation between those structures and the residential neighborhood. And they're keeping all of their sound levels and light levels vastly below what is, what is, what is being proposed here, which is complying for the, to the law. I'm just wondering if there's any interest or commitment in doing better.
I can't, you know, I can't answer a question that is proposed with a lot of assumptions that I don't agree with, but
Which one?
Pretty much all of them. So
One point, just one point.
If you want
The language, Ron's language, Ron's language was will comply with the Jersey noise code.
Exactly.
My question is, do you want, does there any interest in doing better than the complying with the Jersey noise code?
We think that the noise code is protective of health. It's been carefully drafted and it satisfies the requirements. We're not going to look at ambiguous statements. That is not to say that it's going to be well under the code because in many instances it will be. But it's not going to exceed. We are going to be keeping
Got it.
With the law.
Got it.
I realize that probably doesn't satisfy you, Mr. Cronin, but I do you have another question?
No, no, my, I, I have, I have questions about the next item on the agenda, but I gather that won't be for tonight's discussion.
It is getting sort of late, but thank you, sir. Ms. Sax?
I have a question for Mr. Cronin. I'm, I'm just wondering what, when he says best practices, what does he mean?
Oh, I mean, I mean, looking for progress.
Can you give an example?
Yes, I mean, for instance, for instance, with the, in the, in terms of the geothermal exchange plant.
But, but that's not what we
I know. I'm not talking about that.
Yeah.
But what I do, but what I, what, when I studied that, you will, I looked at the noise codes of various places around the country. And Princeton and New Jersey's noise code is among the most lax in the country. It is among the most lax noise codes in the country. And the suggestion is that what Princeton's going to do is comply with the law. And I'm just wondering if there's any interest or commitment in improving beyond what is the, what they must do by law. So as I say, the other examples that you can find around the country is, is 40, which is the ambient suburban resident noise level is 40. That's what they've measured at my house. That's what they measure all around the city is 40. And then, and if you go around the country, you'll see there's many, many, many local ordinances that say no structure shall be built that can go over six decibels beyond that. So that would be 46 in evening and weekends. And this is, this is just nothing even remote.
But there's, I was just, I was just asking, was there anything in terms of the soccer stadium? You know, it seems like, I, I, was there any best practice in terms of the noise reduction as it relates to the soccer stadium that you feel is not being done?
Oh, I, I, I have less sets of commitments around the soccer stadium. This is not going to affect me very much, but I still find, in terms of the best practice of the soccer stadium, if you look at other universities around the country, that's what I would encourage the board to do, is look at other universities in our, in the, the level of Princeton, at other universities around the level of Princeton and look at their soccer stadiums in relation to residential neighborhoods. That's what I would ask.
I, I'm sorry, but is it that you're, is there something they could do to reduce the noise further? Or are you saying that the stadium shouldn't be built at all?
I, I would say that in general, they are much too proximate to a neighborhood. I think given that they're not willing to move it, I think they can just do much more significant efforts to mitigate the sound. And that would be by, by, I, I would suggest, I mean, this is not something I've thought about too deeply, I've got to admit. But ending the game slightly earlier, that would be a very simple way of managing this. If, I mean, Olga has children, I have young children, many of us have young children. There's a nursery school across the street from us. Kids go to sleep, my kids go to sleep, Olga's kids go to sleep, many kids around here go to sleep at eight. If we can get it, them in bed by eight. And if you have, if you have 65 decibel up till 10, which is to repeat Ron and Christopher will comply with the Jersey noise code, that's just, it's embarrassing. It's an embarrassing response, in my view. I think they can do better than that by, and I would have to do a little bit more research about a university of the stature and level of Princeton in its proximity to a neighborhood and what their noise levels are. And I, and this is what I would, I would imagine would, would And I and this is what I would, I would imagine would would be the case. Is that Princeton is well, well, well beyond the norm, well beyond the norm.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you.
Our next member of the public is Marty Schneiderman. So here. Should be coming in. Yeah. Marty, can you unmute?
Hey, Marty, you're muted.
Thank you very much. I'm Marty Schneiderman. I live at forty-seven Murray Place, Princeton.
If you could raise your right hand. If you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
So sworn or firm, again, if you could state your full names, spell your last name, and I know you started to give your address.
I'd be happy to. It's Marty Schneiderman, S C H N E I D E R M A N, and I live at forty-seven Murray Place here in Princeton. Just up the street from where the soccer stadium is today and where it will be in the future. You asked for some constructive suggestions about how to deal with noise. And I know that in the presentation that Ron did on screen number twenty-five was the picture of the sound system and how the sound is going to be broadcast from the speakers there. If I read that correctly and Ron, I would welcome your clarifying if I see this properly. In fact, I wondered, could you set up for just a moment, please, that screen twenty-five, so we can all see that for a moment, please? Is that possible?
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much.
One second.
Sure. Perfect. Thank you very much. So we see here that the left-hand side of the soccer stadium, where the stadium is and and where the the benches are and so on, is where it is. And do I understand properly that the speakers in the stadium are in the left-hand side with sound going out to the right-hand side, as we see in the direction of the now nursery school? Is that correct, Ron?
That's that's correct.
Yeah. So my question is simply this. Those speakers could be put in any direction at all. If instead of those speakers being on the left, going to the right in such a way that it is hitting the buildings and in the direction of the neighborhood, couldn't those speakers be put on the right-hand side of the stadium so that the sound is going to the left towards the football stadium toward Jadwin and towards those university buildings instead to minimize the amount of noise that's there so that this is better for the residential neighborhood at all? And has this been something that was considered? And if so, why was it rejected, please?
It has been considered, and I'll let Emily talk about that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So we modeled the sound from several different speaker arrangements in the area around the stadium. And the problem of having the speakers located on the east side of the stadium and facing west is that because of the press box there, so the announcer would be sitting in the press box on the west with the sound coming from the east to the west, there is a delay in that audio. And it can make it difficult for that person to do the announcements. Also because of the reflections of sound off of the press box, it reduces the intelligibility of the sound system in the stadium. So it is not as good of a sound environment with intelligibility in the stadium. Typically, the response to a poor intelligibility of the sound system is to turn up the volume. We did not want to do that. We also, you know, study the sound and because speakers are not highly directional at low frequency, if there was ever music playing to the speakers, then you'd have speakers that were closer to the residences. We didn't see a significant difference in the noise levels with the speakers located on the east side or west side and where the other problems with intelligibility, which is why we chose to keep the speakers located on the east side and have the limits in the stadium, take it to less than sixty-five d B A.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I'm just wondering, are there any other things that could be done with the speaker system itself to mitigate the volume and the directionality of that sound so that it is reduced and minimized and less of a problem for the community? Any other things that anybody else does in other stadiums like this where they're looking to try to mitigate volume?
So those things are done at other stadiums. That's what we are doing here. You know, instead of having just a single speaker, having them spread out, you know, the speakers are aiming down towards the field. They're not located directly out. You know, we consider the directivity of the speakers in the design, and then, like I said, the limits can be put in the programming to keep it quieter.
Marty, this is Jeff from Athletics. You know, we we have approximately nineteen games a year in the stadium, in this stadium. And and the announcements in soccer are not like a hockey game. It's not like a football game. They're they're much more sporadic with when the P A is running. Yeah, it'll run for the national anthem. And there'll be some announcements, but this is not sound that is constantly going to be barraging the neighborhood. It's very intermittent for soccer.
Yeah, I thank you both, Emily and Jeff, for your comments. Jeff, as I reflect on soccer stadiums and soccer games I've gone to, you're quite right. The level of volume that's coming from those is rather different than we see in other kinds of sports at times.
It's way less.
Yeah, so that may mitigate that in that particular respect. So I want to thank you very much for your comments and your response to my, what I was posing as a constructive suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneiderman. Can we go back to the gallery view, please? And Mr. Cohen, who's
Our next member of the public is Helen Nissenbaum.
We go back to gallery view, please?
Stop sharing.
Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead, Mrs. Nissenbaum.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
My name is Helen Nissenbaum. H E L E N N I S S E N B A U M, and I live at two fourteen Western Way. And mainly briefly, just wanted to second what both Olga and Todd discussed. And in particular, I wanted to press for my, from my point of view, the inadequacy of the acoustic modeling. We, as you know, from previously had have been severely suffering under the current construction and drilling. And especially when the noise gets very loud and the university has claimed to have taken mitigating steps by putting up these strange blankets, which do very little. When the noise gets really, really loud and we complain, we always get the comment back, well, we can't do anything about it because the wind is blowing in the wrong direction. So if you're going to do a model, it just boggles the mind why you wouldn't model the noise, the way the noise travels under different kinds of mitigating, so under different kinds of weather conditions, because the wind does blow and it blows in different directions. And you should anticipate. So that little line drawing that we were looking at that Marty asked us to put up again is really kind of falsehood because that line changes. And we really need to see what it's doing under different kinds of of weather conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nissenbaum. Does the university want to speak to that at all?
I don't think there was a question.
Okay, well, I what the question that I heard is why blame certain noise issues on weather and prevailing winds and yet not take into account whether or atmospheric conditions when doing the sound study or the noise study? That that's a question I I
Thank you.
Thought I heard in there.
Was the comment, I didn't realize she was asking a question. So I guess we can have our Emily speak to that. And if I can just chime in, because I think there's a second part to the same question, which is, if you could model the noise with the prevailing winds, which do tend to blow west to east, and ascertain that you're you're having more sound travel with the university willing to set the base sound decibel level for the sound system at a lower level that takes that into account?
I think the answer to that is yes, we'd have to.
Okay. So maybe the acoustical consultant can speak to whether they're able to to model the prevailing wind.
Yeah, we can. We can include that into our noise modeling.
Okay. So that's a, that's a condition to consider for the board.
Good, thank you.
We have one more member of the public.
Okay.
Bernard Chazelle. Bringing him over now.
Hear me? Hello?
We can hear you, but we can't, we cannot yet see you.
No, well, I have my video on. I'm sorry about that. Let me try again. There, it says my video is on, my mic is on. You don't, well, you're not missing too much.
We actually see your ceiling, Mr. Chazelle.
I think that's right.
Let me just do something. Yeah, maybe it helps.
If you could raise your
What you were missing.
If you could, if you could raise your right hand.
Yes, I raise my right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
I'm Bernard Chazelle. It's C H A Z E L L E. I live on one twenty-eight Broadmead. And thank you. I have two questions. The first one is is this meeting going to go on? Are we going to talk about the tiger thing, or this is going to be postponed to the next meeting? That's my first question. And the second question is, so to chime in on, you know, there's something very disappointing about to hear an hour of all these wonderful projects and showing so little concern for the fact that there are all these houses, there's all these residences, there are dozens of people living there with kids and everything, trying to work with this COVID thing. Very difficult. And there's been so little talk. I mean, at least you should pretend to care, but it's incredible that we hear nothing about it. So let me ask you a specific question. How about a sound wall? Could, has a sound wall be planned around, you know, of of Fisk-Randolph to protect the sound, to protect the residents from the sound? And if the answer is no, why not? Can we have some information about that? That shows some concern, some concern about the residents. Thank you.
The sound system again is a controlled and adjustable system. If there is an issue, it can be lowered. It's very simple.
Mister Gradz, yeah, you're not the person to answer this question. You're a lawyer, okay? I want to hear from the project managers, from the people involved in the design, not in people who are involved with compliance with the law, because we know exactly that you will comply with the law. We went through that already. I don't think we need to revisit that point. My point is this. Have the the other people involved in the project, have they actually sat down and studied the question of whether a sound wall was feasible or not? If it's not, which I assume is the answer, since we haven't heard, then we'd like to know why. That's to me, is that a reasonable question, you think? And I do not think you're the person who who should be answering it. We
So let's, let's not have that particular back and forth. I would, I guess, reiterate your question. Has a sound wall been considered?
Yeah.
And if if so, what drove your decision?
That's good.
Chris, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So the sound wall has not been considered? And the, you know, the, the reason is simply that we, we do believe that the New Jersey regulations are are normal. And they are designed to protect the public health.
That's it. That's your answer?
Yes.
You see, see, this is my problem. This is what we're facing, okay? Is those people are just taking shelter behind the law, show no concern for the environment, show no concern for sound pollution, show no concern for the university at large. We are the faculty, or at least many other people around here are are the faculty. So anyway, I don't want to belabor this point. Just please, members of the planning board, you have to understand what we're facing, okay? It's just a question of being within the limits of the law. I'm sorry, but there are other issues that like like best practices that have to be considered. Okay, I'm done with this. What about my first question? Are we go going on with the tiger plan, or are we going to postpone this for the next time?
We have a hard stop at eleven o'clock. It seems unlikely that we're going to discuss the next item on the agenda beyond the barest. You know, bare minimum, if at all.
Okay. There will be another meeting then?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, good. I will just save that for later. And thank you very much for your patience.
Louise, on the tiger, on the tiger application, I assume we'll take jurisdiction and then carry it to an announced date.
There you go.
Could we have it early in the agenda, not at eleven P M? This, we would appreciate it.
Understood and point taken.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have now a couple more hands up. Bring in Manjul Barghava, his next member of the public.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
My name is Manjul Barghava. My address is one seventy-one Western Way, so my house is also visible in all those pictures, a little bit further than a couple of the earlier speakers from the public. My last name is Barghava, B H A R G A V A.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
I had a much more basic and naive question about this whole process of construction here. The construction, by the way, these past several months has really been unbearable. So loud. Trucks beeping all the time. It's impossible to work, garden, think, sleep. So it's been really, really tough on myself, the people in this house, all my co-residents, all my neighbors. So that's been really tough. So my more basic question was this is a residential neighborhood. This this land is right next to a residential neighborhood. University has so much land across the canal. There's lots of space where there aren't residents living. Can we not build these noisy things away from a neighborhood that has so many children, a nursery, and so many residents who work for the university? Would it not be possible to build these things in all the land that the university has that's not next to residential neighborhoods? And instead, in this area, we can put, you know, history faculty offices. We can put much quieter, much quieter things, just office space, or just fields of grass, you know, have some green space, which Princeton is so known for. Why are we getting rid of all the green spaces? Is it just not possible to keep the green space near the residential neighborhoods or build quieter things and use all the expansive land that the university has elsewhere to build the noisier things away from residents? That was my plea as someone who lives very close to all this loud construction. That's just been unbearable. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, do you want to speak to?
Well, it's a
the location of these facilities. I realize it's a it's a big question and it has to do with the master plan and I
Right. It does have to do with the master plan. And so it's a different topic than what we're here to discuss. But I would point out that no matter what we build, it requires construction. And if construction is the concern, then the noise would come from the construction of anything.
Construction is temporary, but if the things being built are permanently loud, then why not do that elsewhere and put quieter?
Well, we don't believe they're permanently loud. I guess that's the point. We do honestly think that the New Jersey code is well-designed. And we comply with lots of codes throughout all of our buildings. And so it's not a kind of frame of mind that we take only when we think about the neighbors. But it's it's what we have to work with, as all are, but as are all the other codes we work with. And, you know, the stadium has been in this area long before the neighborhood, the football stadium, for example. This has been a noisy part of the campus since before the neighborhood was built. So these are, you know, we expect people to understand the conditions that they're living in.
I was interested to hear that there will be 19 games a year. That was encouraging.
Right. And only a fraction of those are the nighttime games, or some portion of those are the nighttime games.
And a typical game is in the two-hour timeframe. So we're talking, you know, 50 hours a year, absolute max, when there's noise going on. 50 hours a year.
The other reason why these things are where they are is that we are a university campus and trying to integrate athletics into the academic experience of the students and the faculty is an aspiration.
Yeah, I guess my question was just, is there other land that, I mean, I know it's part of a master plan, but is part of the consideration to build the things that do create more noise away from residential areas around the university? Is that a consideration when making the plans? And could it be?
Well, I think it's a complicated question. As I said, we're trying to balance a kind of create an academic setting. And different things make different noise. Laboratories make noise, and we have to control the noise that laboratories make, academic buildings have those noises. So everything we can build, we have to control for the neighborhood. But we're trying to get, this campus plan is designed to create and integrate, integrated experience of athletics and the academic experience. So we don't want to segregate and put athletics in a different, on the other side of the lake. Plus, with so much invested in the athletic center of the campus right now with the stadium, Jadwan Denunzio Caldwell, this is an athletic heart of the campus. I mean, just to give you some, those are sort of things that we thought about as we were planning. We wanted to try to build off of that, that kind of synergy. We are building some athletic facilities on the other side of the lake. So there will be a secondary node. But it's not in this, it'll be, as I say, a secondary, an additional node, not a we're not moving this node.
So Mr. Barghava, I'm sure that's not entirely satisfactory, but I think Mr. McCoy's done a good job trying to answer the question that you posed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Hand that we have up is from Bruce Haffren. I think it relates to the other application, but since he's an attorney for an objector, I think we probably want to hear what he has to say.
Okay.
Bruce, am I audible now?
You are audible.
You're audible, yes.
Am I visible?
Not yet.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Okay. That should work. Thank you.
There you are.
Good evening, everyone. It's unusual to meet in this way, at least for me. It's my first time on Zoom.
Well, we have all had so many hundreds of hours of it that it's like old hat. Welcome to the after times.
Congratulations, Louise. It's working well. No, I didn't want to comment on this application, but I just wanted to make sure I responded to Jerry's comment that he assumed you'll be taking jurisdiction of the next application. I just want to remind Jerry and the board, my clients have an objection to jurisdiction stemming from the issue of whether a use variance is required for the geothermal aspect of the application. I assume Jerry meant, you know, we may reach the issue. I just wanted to remind Jerry that we did have that issue to address presumably at the outset. So I just wanted to make that point. That's all.
Yeah, and I think that's perfectly reasonable. My thought was simply take jurisdiction as to the adequacy of notice and publication.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and reserving for you the right to make your jurisdictional argument.
Thank you. We'll have some cross-examination on the substance, but I wanted to just make that point. So thank you for clarifying, Jerry.
Okay.
Okay, no more hands.
Okay. Where does that put us, Mr. Muller? Or maybe I should pose that to others as well. First, to ask board members if they have any follow-up questions, Mr. Cohen?
Madam Chair, do you want to close the public comment?
Oh, yes. Thank you so much. Since there are no other folks with their hands raised, I'll close the public hearing portion of this application. And Mr. Cohen, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have two things to raise in response to the public comment. One is to ask if we have somebody here who is able to answer the question. You know, Princeton's nuisance noise ordinance is not entirely consistent with the state noise ordinance. And the question is whether Princeton is entitled to create stricter noise regulations than are in effect on the state level or not. In some areas, we are allowed to enforce stricter regulations, in other areas, we're not. And I'm curious if someone can comment on that authoritatively.
Are you asking your staff?
I'm asking anybody who has an answer.
I guess I could just comment very briefly. In my understanding, an ordinance could be adopted that goes beyond. But the only issue is it has to be specific with numbers. It can't be like a discretionary, you know, it has to be a very specific measurable standard.
And my understanding, and Mr. Bridger did forward the noise ordinance to me today, maybe to a couple of other folks as this question was being raised. I did not read it, but I trust from, you know, based on what I've heard from some of our professionals that, or I believe that Princeton's ordinance is fairly vague, difficult, if not impossible, to enforce, maybe subject to interpretation. And so I I'm not really shedding much light on your question, David. And I'm not really the person to address it, but I don't know that we have much recourse with Princeton's own ordinance.
So I will attempt to answer my own question, not entirely qualified to answer, but in my, what I like to now refer to as my side gig, which is being an architect. I have recently been working on a project with an acoustical consultant who sits on the board that develops the New Jersey State Ordinance. And he informs me in no uncertain terms that local municipalities are not entitled to surpass the strictness of acoustical regulations. So it's hearsay. I'm not really credentialed to make that statement, but I've heard that that's the case.
Mr. Cohen, I can speak to it. The law that created the noise code through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection made it clear that if you were going to adopt a noise standard that was based on decibel levels, you had to adopt NJDEPs or sample ordinance or standard ordinance, that you had the option of not adopting that ordinance, but you could not, as you said, do anything in excess of that. And that's part of the reason why Princeton does not have an ordinance based on decibel levels.
I see.
Thank you. The other question that I have is whether, since the university's sound system has the capacity to be adjusted, as we've heard, adjusted at 10:00 PM, would they consider adjusting the decibel level down at, say, 9:00 PM as a gesture of goodwill to the neighbors, even though it's not required? In recognition of the fact that there are young children, you know, whose sleep might be disrupted by having 65 decibel sound all the way till 10:00 PM? Or alternatively, choosing a sound level that would max out at 60 decibels instead of 65 at the boundary with the residential neighborhood? So these are a couple of compromise, concrete suggestions that I wanted to put out to see how the university might voluntarily respond.
If I could add to that, David, either I missed it, but the one thing I didn't hear was why the decibel level had to be at whatever level the university is putting it at prior to 10 o'clock? Why something low, what was a metric which led them to the decibel level that they were at? And I don't think there was any testimony on that.
So Jerry, the state standard is 65 during the day, and then at 10 o'clock, it shifts to 50 decibels. So it's
I understand that.
I think what we're being asked is, what level of sound do we need within the stadium?
Exactly.
To be functional?
Right.
And can we go back and revisit that and lower that so that we can find a sweet spot? Let's say that allows the PA system to, you know, serve its function and minimize, you know, go beyond, you know, and do better for the neighborhood? It seems like a reasonable request. I don't think we have the, that takes some study. I don't think we could answer it right here. But if we could find a way to say that that would be something that we would follow up on, I think that we should do that.
Ron, I think that's not a study that's done in an office. I think that's a study that, after the stadium is complete, and we have fans in there, a reasonable number of fans, so we know what it really and I don't know if we can accurately model that. I defer to, you know, Emily. But I think it's something that could be looked at. But at all times, I think our agreement is we will not exceed the state standard. But I think it's something we should look at after the stadium is completed.
Ms. Sacks and then Mr. O'Donnell, but I want the university a chance to continue to respond.
Yeah, good. Good, Emily.
I was going to say that, you know, yes, after the stadium constructed as part of the integration or integration process for the speakers, you can take sound level measurements at the property line near the residences in the stadium and kind of make sure that, you know, whatever the levels that are, you know, required in the stadium to have an intelligible sound system and kind of design the stadium to that. And, you know, the real intent of this modeling was to provide the absolute maximum sound level.
Mr. Purcell?
I'd like to ask Emily a question. What was your model based on, however? What levels of sound were you basing your model on to show that you meet state code? You had to have set some levels inside the stadium.
Yes, we were looking at sound levels of 81 decibels on the near side, on the west side field. And then levels of, let me pull them in the notes real quick, levels, you know, closer to 75 decibels on the east sideline. And so those would be the levels kind of at the field, edge of the field.
And are those typical for soccer stadiums? Are those typical levels? Are those levels that you chose in order to show what a maximum might be, for example?
They are, you know, probably typical. So again, a sound in a soccer stadium is very variable. It's not a continuous thing, so it's hard to say, you know, what the typical sound is. It'll be quieter at times. And this was pretty much trying to set that maximum limit to the 65 decibels.
So in fact, it was working backwards, it sounds like.
Right. That's what I was getting at. If we could determine what level of sound the speakers will actually operate on, and you could run a model on that, you may be able to show that you're not getting to the limit. You're actually below the limit. So I think that's an appropriate request from the public is model it in more realistic fashion to see what is it that's really going to be happening?
That sounds reasonable.
So does that become a condition? Or is that a a study that needs to be run before we craft a resolution or findings of fact?
My opinion is that it's a condition because, per the earlier conversation, as a board, we really don't have the authority to deny an approval if they're compliant with the 65 decibel limit. So anything that improves upon that should not have to delay the, you know, the decision on the application. Jerry?
I'm not sure I agree that we don't have the authority to require the study, if it can be done now, as opposed to when the stadium is built, separate question, and impose a lower level if the study shows that, in fact, the system will work at a lower decibel level and provide whatever level of sound is necessary within the stadium. Given the impact it could have on the neighborhood, the adjacency of the neighborhood, I think we have the power to do that. I think it's a reasonable
But all I'm saying, Jerry, is that it should be a condition of approval and not something that could lead to rejection of the application.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Right. And if it's a, so if it's a condition of approval, Right. And if it's a, so if it's a condition of approval, it can be done after we, after we make the decision.
Right. I, I think the, the question for the board is, we wanted to try and have them do it now, and maybe it's not possible to do it now. I know Mr. Grayden indicated that the stadium should be built first, and Ms. Pierceall agrees as well. And if that's correct, and it might be, then it should be a condition. If the modeling can be done without the stadium being built, it would be nice to have that information before we made the decision. But I agree with you. It shouldn't be a condition. It shouldn't be a set of facts which supports a denial.
So I, I think it could be two separate conditions. One could be to do a study that's not working backwards, but instead is working from a desired sound level in the stadium to discover what sound levels we then have at the residential boundary. So that would be the first study, and then there could be a post-occupancy study as well.
Yeah. I mean, there must be a lot of empirical data available in terms of experience at other stadiums, as to what decibel level they use for soccer games, for example.
I would think so.
In my experience, it's more common in professional stadiums than in collegiate facilities, although I, we can certainly do the research.
So, so Jerry, you know, we, we would be looking at this sort of as, you know, a structured condition in, in the sense that if we put together the stadium, sort of like what we're doing with traffic, we could certainly go out and, you know, take the measurements and then show and provide to the engineer evidence of compliance. In this sense that it's not compliant, we could adjust the system to make it compliant. Again, we need to put this in perspective that we're talking about, you know, our measurement or our expert went out there and looked at, you know, an, an average of, you know, 80 something within the stadium and what that impact would be. And that is a sound level that is something that would work for the stadium. So our purpose here tonight was to show how we comply with the law. We could certainly have that as a condition afterwards. Again, we're looking at this, we have to look at a perspective of, we're not looking at this as a, you know, a loud use, continuous use. Again, most of the year, it's not being used at all. It's not generating any sound. You have tons of other sound systems around there. To the, just to the north is a softball field with a sound system. I'm not saying it's similar or the same. I'm just saying then there's a baseball field just to the left of that with the sound system. So there's, there's all these sound systems in the area, you know. It, it's not like it's something out of the ordinary. We see this as a quiet use just based on the amount of time that it's going to be out there and used. I mean, like you said, two dozen days out of the year, you know, I think they said 19 or 20 at most. We're talking very insignificant amount. It's, it's not like, you know, everyone else in the neighborhood, when you have an air conditioning unit at 60 decibels, you know, what everyone has a code that they have to meet. We have demonstrated that based on, on reasonable levels within the stadium at 81 or whatever it was decibels, we will comply with the law. We will comply with the code. It could be measured. And then after occupancy and during use, it could be measured again. We do not want to cause a problem for the neighborhood, and we will do what we can to make it so that it doesn't have a negative impact, but it has to be measurable standards, and that's what we're talking about here. We will comply, and you could put that in the, the condition that
Well, that's, sliding back a little bit from the approach that, that the university signaled it was willing to take, which is to figure out what is the, what's the level that works? Might be below the maximum required. So I don't mean to talk in circles. I just don't want to go back to this compliance conversation.
It may be, but I was taking the worst-case scenario. My example was just taking the worst case. I'm saying in the worst case, even if we did keep it at 81 and we didn't comply, we would have to lower it, and the sound in the stadium would be lower than what we would prefer, but it would still, it would still work. So I'm saying there's ways for us to address it, and we certainly can do that after occupancy and, and get a realistic number. You know, because it'll be filled. We'll have the sound. You could take the measurements, and then we can share it with the engineer.
It just seems to me
We have blown past our 11 o'clock parts, what I described as a hard stop. And I can tell people are really tired, and I want to figure out how we wrap up as quickly as possible without shirking our responsibilities here. So, Mr. Muller, you were about to say something, and then maybe you can advise us on wrapping this up.
Yeah, unless we really want to continue for a while, because we'd have to go through all the conditions as well. I suggest we can continue this application to a date certain. We asked the university to come back with data as to what's done elsewhere. If they can do a study now, and I think Ron seemed demeanable to it, that, that addresses the question of what's really needed within the stadium in terms of decibels. Having nothing to do with compliance, and this has nothing to do with compliance.
Okay, but we will not know that answer until after it's built and we can study. So why don't we
I'm not, I'm not sure that. I mean, that might be true, Christopher, but I, but I, I'm not sure that's true at all.
There's so many variables, you know, whether you have 2,000 people in the stadium or whether you have 200 people in the stadium. And if we, if we, and we will agree to comply with the standard, but I, I think there's, we're members of the community too, and I think we will make every effort once the stadium is built to understand what sound levels are necessary. Maybe we don't need to have this high a sound level. That's what we're hoping. But if the stadium is built, we're not going to know that. We can model it all we want. It'll be good, but they won't be perfect. When it's built, we can really know.
That's exactly what
And I think, I, I appeared before this board in the past, and when I said we're going to do something, we've done it.
Jerry, can't we say that after it's built, we will take a look at it, we will measure it, we'll do the modeling, and we will adjust, we will take a look at adjusting it to a level where it's functioning, but also based on the crowd. So, you know, 200 people or 400 at a regular game is going to work with a much lower sound level compared to a, you know, a full stadium. So we have to also take that into account, and we can do that once we have the realistic measurements.
Although Ms. Pierceall had said earlier that really was, the crowd noise was basically insignificant. We wouldn't travel very far. It was just the speed.
Not in terms of noise, but listening inside the stadium.
They absorb the sound.
Oh, I see, I see.
It makes a real difference how many people you have
Yeah.
in, in any venue. We have a lot of venues, and, and when there are less people, we do turn it down. It, it serves to run people away when it's too loud.
Yeah.
So, so we have, we have a vested interest in, in having our sound levels adequate for our fans and not a nuisance or disturbance to our neighborhood. And that level is separate.
Let me just suggest, I mean, since we're continuing to another night, because I really, for those of you who haven't been around when Jerry goes through the conditions of an approval, it can take a while. I would love to see, as he was suggesting, just come back, you don't, don't even have to do another study, but come back with some results of research suggesting what sound levels would be typical from the sound system in an auditorium with an average crowd. We've heard from your testimony that an average crowd might be 400 people. So that's going to be, we've talked about 19 games a season, most of which are average games. There are few of them are postseason games where the stadium is full. So take an average game. What would be the industry standard for the levels of the sound system? And what approximate sound levels would that have at the edge of the residential neighborhood? Just some testimony to that effect. When you're coming back anyway, it's a little bit of additional research. And then we won't have a condition about doing additional modeling if we can get that testimony at the next meeting.
Right.
And we'll have just a condition about post-occupancy evaluation.
That sounds good.
Louise, I did want to make just one comment.
Sure.
Which is that, you know, there's a limit to what the planning board can do in terms of this conversation. It is about compliance with the law, and I think we can work to try to alleviate some of the concerns of the residents, but it seems to me that there's a larger conversation that needs to hap, to happen here between the university and the neighbors. And I, well, I guess I do have a question. Are there conversations taking place between university representatives and the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors, or is the only forum for that here in the very constrained legal environment of the planning board? Are there other places for this, this conversation to happen?
Well, we've had multiple presentations with the neighbors, just with, with, just with the neighbors outside of a, outside of a formal municipal process.
Was it a presentation or was it a dialogue?
I'd say it was a dialogue. And then, and then Kristin Applegate is engaged in conversations more individually with neighbors constantly.
Okay, because I, you know, obviously there's a balance between the needs of faculty who are raising families and have work and, and family obligations, and then there are, of course, the needs of the university to meet, you know, to create a robust undergraduate experience, collegiate experience with athletics and, and things that, that do have noise. It's, it's a university. So, you know, and, you know, you could, one solution would be to move the faculty further away, but then I'm, I'm not sure that that, you know, I don't think that, that that would make very many people happy. You know, there, there's a balance between the needs, and, and so I just wonder if there's another conversation that needs to be had about the master plan with faculty and students together and the university, that's sort of a deeper conversation about how you balance these needs. And it's, it's, you know, the planning board is a very inadequate forum to have that deeper conversation, which from my perspective and what I've seen here tonight, really needs to take place. So I would, I'm just would like to urge you to have that, that dialogue and that deeper conversation.
I, I know I've been receiving notice of all the meetings with the neighbors, and there have been many, and around the whole East Campus development. And I think that the fact that we had four or five neighbors speak tonight is probably testimony to the kind of work that has already been done, because this is a highly organized neighborhood. If they hadn't been meeting with them, I suspect we would have had 20 or 25 members of the public tonight. So I just want to give the university some credit for, I think, making the effort.
Yeah, no, I was not in any way saying that anyone was remiss. I just, you know,
I think Mary makes a good point. I, I think we totally understand that point. I think it's very helpful and constructive.
Thank you. So let's talk about that date certain. And then move quickly to take to acknowledge proper notice and take jurisdiction of the next item so that we can carry on with our lives. Carrie, what is the, well, let's see, I can look at the agenda. Is there a deadline for making a decision about this application? It's 12/26.
Yes, this application and the next one times out at the end of this month, so we will require, we will be asking for an extension of time.
Okay.
But we would need a date.
Yes. Well, the 2021 calendar I have in front of me, so these are the dates that we were considering. There are several applications that we have to schedule, but we have two dates in January, January 7th and January 21st. There's another university property I need to, proposal I need to put on in January for the Ivy Club. So it's already getting a little tight for January, but if we need to fit them in, we can do that. We also have two dates in February, February 4th and 18th.
Finishing this application should not take long, so.
No, it should not.
Put it in January.
Yeah.
And I feel that perhaps we should tack it on with Tiger since it's the same residence.
Yeah.
How does the January 7th agenda look? Could we be placed on that?
Well, I have so many things I need to put on it, so it all depends on what my officers want to do, but is Mr. Affron still on? I need to make sure that he's available on these dates.
Carrie, are we, Carrie, are we sure that that January 7th date is after the council has reorganized and made appointments?
Typically, they do that the first, you know, few days of the year, so I can't say for sure. If you prefer, we can put Ivy on for the 7th, and then we could push these two on for the 21st.
Well, maybe we should cluster all three university applications. Maybe that makes sense.
We could do that.
I'm not sure if we can get through three in one night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it seems doubtful to me as well, and I certainly wouldn't want to try to do three on, on January 7th.
Yeah, Ivy, Ivy Club is a subdivision. It's, it's not terribly complicated, but I'll leave that to the board.
And they're, they're a private university affiliated. They're not, it's not strictly a university application, correct?
Well, the university is a partner.
Okay.
Yeah, because the land's being merged into
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the subdivision is for the ESNCs project.
Oh, okay.
So it's not that great.
Three in one?
Well, I, I, I mean, if we schedule it and don't get to it, you can always push it to, well, I don't know. Ivy is a small application, and this I don't
And finishing this is small, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, try and do all three.
Yeah.
Is the 21st acceptable, Mr. Affron?
Which state? Which state? Oh, he is, sorry.
Yeah, I'm here.
January 21.
Yeah, that day it's fine. I mean, I, I will probably have about 40 minutes of cross-examination or 45 minutes, just so you know that in terms of timing and everything.
Okay.
I tend to doubt we'll finish it that same day.
I, I thought we were, wait, I'm confused. I thought we were looking at the 7th. Are we now looking
There's two dates in January.
Oh, okay. You're looking at both dates?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else scheduled for the 7th yet, Carrie? I think the Ivy Club was, right?
Well, I, I was leaving everything open. There are two projects that time out at the end of this month, and we have to speak with their attorneys to determine if they need to, how much of an extension of time they're willing to give us. So I might have room in on the 7th to throw something on. I, I don't know yet. This is all up in the, I didn't know where we, I thought we would be done today, so.
But we need to have a date to carry to.
Can we carry it to the 21st? Or do you want to just carry it to the 7th for the soccer? And then Tiger and the Ivy for the 21st?
No, I don't think we want to do that because it's the same neighbors.
Right.
Could we ask the university to carry this and Tiger to the end of January just to give us some scheduling flexibility?
Yeah, I would, I'd be tempted to do Tiger on the 7th and try to, excuse me, Ivy on the 7th, and then this and Tiger on the 21st. But I, I realize that we have other applications too, and that some I'm aware of and some I'm not, so. some I'm aware of and some I'm not, so.
The two I'm speaking about are Lanwin and J M Mohan, and they've been up in the air.
And Princeton Academy too.
Right.
They're scheduled for next week.
Yes.
Christopher, Christopher, does the twenty-first work for you?
Uh, I, I think, schedule-wise, if it's into my schedule, we would really, this application, first of all, let's talk about soccer. We finished all our direct, we opened it to the public. I think it's really close and could be wrapped up pretty quickly. And if we could find time on the seventh, um, I, I, that would be really appreciated. Um, you know, the, there's ongoing construction on the site. We're trying to line these up and every little bit helps. So if there's a way to get us on the seventh, I think we would really appreciate, because I really think this is going to take only a little bit of that, a little time um, to, to work through, because it's really just this one issue and condition. And then, um, we've addressed all of the items in the report, and I think Jerry can go through whatever other conditions he came up with. Um, but I really don't think it's going to be very long. So if we can carry this one to the seventh, I, I, we would appreciate that.
Do we not have another meeting in December? Do we have one more meeting?
We have.
We have one more meeting next Thursday. We have two applications.
Well, couldn't we just finish the soccer one up next week? Because, you know, it's very disconcerting to go through, to spend an entire evening and absorb everything and to, to then to have, uh, you know, a whole month go by, and you, you, it's, it's, it's very jarring. You can't remember what happened. If there's, if we're.
Does it? I'm sorry to cut you off. Does it give the university enough time to do the homework that at, that's been discussed and come back next week?
Uh, I have to look at my sound consult.
What are the two, what are the two applications next week?
Uh, Sacred Heart School for Boys and Three Hundred Witherspoon.
And is Sacred Heart the Fields that?
Yes.
Uh-huh. And I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Three Hundred Witherspoon.
Uh, the Packet Building, the Princeton Packet. Oh, okay.
And they're both pretty large.
Yeah.
I think it's better to carry it to the seventh.
I'm afraid I do too.
That's, I, I'm fine with the seventh. Does, does the university feel like?
I hate to, I hate to throw a monkey wrench into the works, but, and this is probably Jerry's call, but all of the testimony was heard by this planning board. Who's going to be on the planning board on the seventh?
Yeah, we, we don't know that. Uh, uh, obviously, um, people who are carried over to next year, I mean, they could, uh, they could clearly vote. And anybody, any, any new appointees, if they listen to the, the tape, they could vote as well.
I don't think there's any doubt that we'll have a quorum.
Yeah.
Carryover.
Right.
Good question though, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, if we need, if we need a new member for a quorum, then we can have them listen to the tape, you know, recording. Right, but we won't.
I, I'm willing to drink some more coffee tonight.
Nope.
I tried, I tried.
You tried. Okay. So, uh, so this application, so Ivy and the soccer fields on the seventh tentatively, and Tiger on the twenty-first. And it's unfortunate that.
Wait, wait, no, I, I thought Tiger was going to be on the seventh along with this.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, wow, we're going to try to do all three on the seventh?
No, no, uh, Ivy would be on the twenty-first.
Okay.
I would say I really doubt we've finished Tiger based on, you know, the amount of time the university will need. It's a technical presentation. And we're going to have our aspect, and we'll have some jurisdictional discussion. I don't mind starting it on the seventh, but I did want to note from my point of view, I doubt we finish.
Okay.
That'd be true for whatever day we put it on, because.
That's right.
I, I agree with David that this, the, wrapping this up should not take that long.
Right. Okay.
It's a plan.
Okay, so, so, so just for the members of the public, this is being carried to, um, January seventh, that we know for the note, formal notice. Um, and then once we end this session, we just have to take jurisdiction for limited purposes for, for Tiger.
Right. Let me, and let me just point out, I don't think there's going to be any additional public hearing for this application.
Right.
Just so the members of the public don't feel like they have, well, I guess if we're doing both Tiger and this on the same night, they'll want to come anyways, so.
Yeah.
Well, if the university is going to present further, uh, testimony on, on that, uh, on the issue of the functionality of the, of the decimal level in the stadium, I think the members of the public need to be given an opportunity to to resp- to, to question, to ask questions about that.
Okay, good.
So, so just so I'm clear, um, do we expect that we would have any time on the seventh to start, um, uh, the, uh, if we got through soccer and Ty- Ivy to start, um, the Tiger?
Ivy is not going to go on until the twenty-first, Chris.
The, the only other one on the seventh is, is Tiger, Cr- Christopher.
So it's soccer and Tiger on the seventh. Oh, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, could we, uh, I think we need to, um, take, uh, well, I guess on this one, we'll carry it to the seventh without further notice, and I think, Jerry, we still actually have to go through and open up and talk about, um, the Tiger and, um, you know, for the record, providing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, would you, would you?
The, the introduce that, and then we can, um, a, a, address proper notice and jurisdiction and, uh, this is the trustees of Princeton University Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan uh, for Tiger and Athletic Operations, this Randolph and Faculty Roads Block Fifty Point Zero One, Lot Eighteen, file number P twenty twenty eight seven one P. Um, and this, uh, expiration is, uh, December thirtieth, although we've already discussed continuing it. So, Mr. Muller?
Yeah, um, Carrie, I take it the affidavit of services is, uh, acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, proof, proof of publication and service or an order, and the board has jurisdiction only with respect to the adequacy of notice and service. There is still that jurisdictional question that's been raised by Mr. Affron, and he still will have an opportunity to, to address that.
Right.
So to having taken jurisdiction, I guess all we have to do is announce that this, this will now be carried to the seventh as well without further notice.
And I guess you just did that.
Yeah, right.
And, and I think, Jerry, I think to, for the record, so that it's clear, um, soccer, the application we heard tonight is also being, um, carried to January seventh without any further notice. And that anyone interested in listening could go to the municipal website and go to the agendas and link in through that, the Zoom link shown on the agenda for those meetings, correct?
Okay.
We can go that approach. I just don't know whether or not the YouTube videos will be available at that time. I do have my own audio, so I, I.
No, no, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm saying for the new hearings on the seventh. In other words, that right now people don't have links for the January seventh meeting, but you could get that link at the agenda on the website. So I just want to make it clear that there's an ability to figure out what that link is without getting a second notice or something like that.
That's correct. It will be on the agenda.
Yeah, thanks, Minister de Gresio. That was, that's a good thing to point out. Okay. Well, with apologies for going thirty minutes past what I described as a hard stop, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're done. Um,
Move to adjourn.
Which means, right, that Mr. Cohen needs to move to adjourn, which he just did.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Well done, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, thanks, everybody. Thanks to the university and thanks to all the neighbors um, for your forbearance and patience and good questions and, uh, planning board and professionals. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you anyways.
Night. Day.